Good afternoon. In accordance with session 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, the meeting of Committee of Adjustment of City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment consider application for various --
Through you, Madam Chair. Sorry, I'm just going to ask that everyone here in person were getting started. Thank you.
Yeah. And the variances from the provision of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and also the consent to serve a property to create new lots. My name is Yin Chen. I will chair this afternoon's hearing. And I also like to introduce the members on the panel today. From my far left is Mr. Philip Goss, and then Mr. Sahi Bayet, and Mr. Ryan Bissonnet, and Mr. Larry Clay. And I also would like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Inasabie, the Chipaway, and the Hulasuni, and the Windex people. And it's home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, Native people. And we also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 14 with the Mississauga of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through webinars and online digital platform. The meeting are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. And when your item is called, you will be muted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During that, this time, your camera will be enabled, and you will be only visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through webinars are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist control during their video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. And how to receive a decision of committee? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of their decision of committee on an application must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name and address and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, T-Labs, will be sending notifications and appealed updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decision. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and specified persons and public bodies as those terms are defined in the Planning Act are permitted to appeal decisions of Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. And the hearing procedure is that I will call each item in order of the agenda, listed in the agenda. When you make your submission, when the application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are advised, the chair should they wish to speak to committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. And I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other material we wish to submit to the committee must have email in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept material at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to the proposal at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are in form of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. In general, we will call on all the speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through webinars follow. The committee member may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. And in the afternoon, I'd like to know whether there are any declarations or conflict interest in the afternoon panel sessions? No, there's no? And do we have any closed file or deferral requests?
Through you, Madam Chair. No files to be closed this afternoon, or don't see any files to be closed this afternoon. We do have two deferral requests. Item number 23.
Okay, 23.
508 Dawes Road, file number A0588/24TEY. As well as item number 27, 51A Condor Avenue, file number A0765/24TEY.
Are those applicants available? We can deal with those items first?
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair. Just because we were running behind in schedule today, then we can deal with both of those at this time.
Both at the same times, okay.
So at this time, then, let's deal with the 508 Dawes.
Yes.
And if you can just read the purpose of application and the materials, and then we'll get the agent online.
I thought I having a break here. Okay. Item 23 is 508 Dawes Road. This is to legalize and to maintain the conversion of the ground floor storage space into two residential dwelling units. That was completed without authorized building permit, and also to permit one additional residential dwelling on the ground floor. There will be a total of 65 residential dwelling units with the four-story apartment building. On this file, we also received the minute from the September 18 public hearing, and we received survey site plan, floor plan, and elevations, a revised site plan, and also a revised zoning notice, a cover letter from the agent, and also a deferral request from the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online to explain the reason for deferral. We do have people here in person to speak.
Yes.
But it'll be based on the merits of that deferral.
Yes.
And I believe we have a couple of people online as well.
Okay, thank you. Just before we start, we will just remind everyone that we are dealing with the deferral request first. So the answer is usually yes or no, whether you support or you oppose the deferral request. And we will deal with the merit of the application when it comes to the right time, but not now.
Good afternoon. Through you, Madam Chair. This is Sal Creamy. I just 2572, Eglinton Avenue West, here to speak to the request for a deferral on 508 Dawes Road. The last hearing that we were before the committee, it was evident that there was an abundance of community interest and opposition to the proposal. We tried our best to secure appropriate meeting space to host a community meeting. Unfortunately, we weren't able to secure space in a timely manner to provide the residents with enough notice to make the meeting in advance of today's hearing. So as such, we would request an indefinite deferral. And also, the owner got an updated zoning notice, which highlighted new development charges, which they are looking into their options as well. So for those two reasons, we are requesting an indefinite deferral.
Okay, thank you. Do we have someone here?
So anyone here wanting to speak to the deferral, please, one by one, come up to the podium. How many speakers do we have there? Just the two? You can sit together, or you can just wait to speak separately. And then just push the button so the red light is on. There you go.
Good afternoon. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm a tenant at the building at 508 Dawes Road. I've lived there for about 10 years. I was here last --
Can you tell? Can you give us your first and last name and the exact address, the unit number?
Sagal Aiden, 508 Dawes Road, apartment 418.
Okay, thank you, yes.
I've lived at this building for about eight years.
But we are dealing with the deferral requests. And I think the reason, one of the reasons is that they don't have enough time to organize a community consultation meeting. So they are asking for deferral. We would like to ask you whether you're in support or opposed to the deferral.
I'm in support, but I also would like a full-blown rejection of this plan.
No, we will deal with that in the --
Okay, but yeah, a deferral, like in a deaf --
Yeah, thank you. You're in support. Thank you very much, yeah.
So I can't speak?
No, we are dealing with the deferral issue first, yeah.
The five minutes of speaking time is only if we're considering the application.
Gotcha.
We're only considering whether or not to defer it, to consider it.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thanks.
You understand that this is not to hear the application? This is to also consider whether we will grant them deferral on the case, yeah.
Is the red light on? Okay.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee of Adjustments. My name is Ryan Endo. I am a licensed paralegal and notary public for Ontario. I'm also chair of the Dawes Acorn Tenants Association. In terms of my address, I live at 500 Dawes Road, apartment 808. As you may already be aware from my communications to the Committee of Adjustments, I am obviously against the minor variance that the applicant is seeking. I know that we're focused on the, on deferral right now. I think that there shouldn't be a deferral, and that we should hear this matter on the merits here today.
So you oppose?
I oppose it.
Okay, thank you.
If I can communicate as to why I oppose?
I don't think so. I think that we want to take a survey, how many people oppose, and how many support for this moment, yes.
Okay, because the basis that the applicant is seeking deferral isn't true.
Oh.
I just wanted to communicate.
We cannot comment on that. So let's listen to other speakers.
Okay, anyone else here in person that wishes to speak on this item regarding the deferral? See none? Okay, so then we're going to go to those online.
Jagdish, you've been unmuted?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Are you in support of the deferral or not in support of the deferral?
Madam, I want to speak on the application. But on the issue of deferral, as such, I have no comments to make.
So we need your first and last name and your address.
Jagadish Manohar, apartment 219, 508 Dawes Road.
Yes. We are dealing with, the applicant is requesting a deferral. We only want to ask you whether you are in support of the request or opposed it.
All I want to say is, the request for deferral may be for some undisclosed reason.
So are you in support or opposed?
As I said, I have no comment as such on the deferral issue.
I don't catch what you said.
I said I have comment on the deferral matter, but I want to speak on the application.
We are not, today, we are not going to hear the application because the applicant is requesting a deferral. We are now considering whether it should be granted a deferral. So our question to you is very simple. Can you give us an idea whether you're going to support the deferral or not?
I think I would leave it to you, to your decision.
I take that as no position.
She's not opposed.
She's not opposed, okay.
I think the important thing, ma'am, that you need to know is that you'll have an opportunity at a later date when this comes before the committee to share your views on the application.
Yes.
I would look forward to that.
Okay, so you're in support of the deferral? Okay.
Okay, we have one more person online. Hello, Janice, you've been unmuted?
Through you, Madam Chair. We're having a hard time unmuting. Janice, I'm going to try to call them.
I know I already spoke before, but --
Sorry.
Yeah. I just wanted to simply say, the reason why they're deferring this entire application is not for the reason that they're stating. And I really, really hope, and I plead with you guys, to just throw out this entire application. Don't defer it to another date, because that's their slimy tactic. They defer it, and they keep deferring it, and they're going to continue to push it back. The mere fact is, they know exactly what they're doing.
We understand. We actually are listening. So can you, let us just go through with the process first, and then we will get back.
Janice, you've been unmuted?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, hello. Yes, I'm not in support of the deferral today. Absolutely not.
You would like to hear it today?
Because?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, so, thank you. That's it. And can we bring back the applicant? Because I actually have a question to ask him. Is the applicant online? Yeah. My question to you, do we have him online now?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, you, first, you mentioned the reason for the deferral is that you cannot get the space organized for the community outreach or consultation meeting. And then you asked for indefinitely, yeah?
Two reasons, two reasons, Madam Chair.
I'm so sorry. Let me finish the, so you also requested indefinite delay. So is that, are you still planning to have this consultation meeting?
What I, no, there's two reasons for the deferral. One is that we weren't able to secure a space to provide the residents with enough proper notice in advance of the hearing. The second reason is, the owner received an updated zoning notice with updated development charges, which they are exploring their options. Those are the two reasons for the deferral today.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
We have some questions for you, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
I was here on the previous hearing date as well, and I remember there was a notice issue, and that was the original deferral. So you say you weren't able to secure a room in time for this meeting, although it's been over a month, I think, since that previous meeting. But did you make any attempts to secure a room? Like, did you schedule a meeting?
Through you, Madam Chair. The committee doesn't know me personally, but when I give my word on something, I'm telling you the truth. We tried to explore options at the Toronto Public Library, and there's an elementary school that's, the name of it slips my mind. We were unsuccessful with the Toronto Library securing a date that would have provided enough notice to the tenants. I wanted to give them at least a week's notice, and also that would have been timely before today's date.
Okay, and then now, if this deferral is granted, your principal or the owner of the building will be considering whether or not to bring this back to the committee after consultation, or whether to withdraw it altogether? Is that what's going on?
There's the other element with heightened development charges, and that's what I said, they're exploring their options. I haven't been provided any updates from them, what they are doing with that. So I can't provide definite reasoning or further insight as to when this may come back to committee.
Okay, so that's a yes, you might just withdraw it altogether?
There is that possibility. And I'm not trying to listen, understand, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to play games. This is just what I know, and I've also been limited in the knowledge that I've obtained for this application.
That's fine, and we're only here to talk about the deferral in any case.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
So just quickly, so, one of your, one of the purposes of this application is to legalize. So have you already constructed the two units in the basement?
They have, yes, sure.
Okay, so do you need authorization through us, or is that a building code issue?
No, authorization is required through the Committee of Adjustment to legalize the construction of those units.
Whether you decide not to pursue the additional dwelling on the ground level, you still have to return to us for the approval of the conversion of the two units in the basement?
I've made the owner aware of that through you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Yes, and also, the last question, then, you said that because of development charges being increased, and then you will consider to withdraw the application? Does it mean that you're going to convert it back to where it was before? Whatever use it was?
It was storage before, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So they converted into residential. They've made two --
So they're further, those are habitated units. That provides another layer of difficulty here. But again, I --
No, yeah, I understand. It's only the reasoning that you say that the development charge may be the, one of the reasons that you will not pursue this any further. But in that case, means that then you have to convert it back to a storage, right? That's my question only.
I wish I could provide a lot more insight for this application. What's before the committee is all that I know. So I think with the information on hand, the decision needs to be made whether we hear it today or defer it.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Any more question to the applicant? No? So we do not have any more questions for you, so we are in committee now. Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, so I have a few comments, having been here on the previous hearing, and then back and hearing what I'm hearing. So I think we've identified some of the problems here. They're going to have an order to comply to remove those two units. They're going to need to come back for planning permission. They can't remove those two units, though, without going to the landlord-tenant board to evict the tenants that they've allowed into illegally constructed units. That's my belief and understanding. So I expect they probably will be back to legalize these two units, or they're going to be in a difficult spot either way. The development charges shouldn't, I don't think, should be a surprise that there would be development charges. The surprise would be that they would ever have developed new units without expecting there to be a charge. But in terms of the deferral itself, I think it's the appropriate thing to grant when they're asking for a deferral, and they're the applicant, and they clearly do need to consult with the community. I would want our minutes to reflect that that's one of the reasons for the deferrals, so that when it comes back, there, we can be certain that there is consultation. And I also want to make it clear to the multiple tenants that are not in favor of a deferral, that we have heard them, and that if we were not granting the deferral, and we heard the application, and we rejected the application, that actually doesn't prevent them, under the city's bylaws, from bringing the application again. So it wouldn't be the end of it. They would just bring the same application again. So there would be a second application fee, but that would be the only difference. So, yes, so those are my reasons why I think a deferral is appropriate in the circumstances.
But I also want to clear that actually, yeah, the development charge is almost irrelevant for the case, because they have to pay it anyway. They should know that it's part of the conversion, yeah. But I just want, a little bit worried that, I just would like to also emphasize that we sort of have, at least a verbal commitment that they will do this meeting, which is the base of our decision to grant them deferral, is the meeting with the --
Yeah, I mean, that was the reason for the previous deferral, which is why it's disappointing to see them come back without having had that meeting.
And, yes.
But, yeah, so I'd want the minutes to reflect again that we expect that meeting before they come back.
Yes. So any more comment? No? So do we have a decision about the deferral?
Sure, I'll move to defer it.
To defer it, but emphasize that the reason?
I think the Secretary Treasurer has heard the reasons to put in the minutes. So I'll move to defer it.
Yeah. Anyone second, anyone second? Mr. Bayet, second? All in favor for the deferral? 4-1. Mr. Ryan Bissonnet is?
And I think I heard someone requesting a copy. Maybe speak with city staff if you want a copy.
Yeah. Mr. Bissonnet, dissent.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. Then we'll move on to the next deferral request, which is 51A Condor Avenue.
Is it number 27, number?
Item 27?
Item, yeah. It's 51 Condor Avenue. This is to alter existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete first-story addition, and a front three-story addition, and a new rear-ground floor deck with a new front porch. The existing front integral parking space and driveway will be removed, and no parking space will be provided on the lot. We received a survey site plan, floor plan, and elevations, two photographs of the property, and a tree protection plan. And we've received comment from transportation engineering, and a staff report from Urban Forestry, and advisory staff report from MetroLink. And we receive support from, for five, six addresses from Condor Avenue, and also in, we have received letter of interest, and we also received opposition from 51 Condor Avenue.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online, as well as one speaker here in person. So at this time, we'll unmute the agent, so they can explain the reason for the deferral.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Osnan Stambock. I'm the agent for the owner, and I'm at 15 Moreland Road. I'm seeking deferral so that we can address some of the transportation comments and some of the neighbors' concerns with the construction. Mostly, we do not want to remove parking on the site, because then transportation is saying we must remove the curb cut, and that would make it impossible to ever introduce or ever propose any parking on that space. So we will revise the drawings to make that parking work.
So you just would like to have more time to work with both the community and also transportation, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So do we have other speakers?
Yes, there's one speaker.
Just push the button.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me? Okay, yeah. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Chairman, Chairwoman, and rest of the committee. My name is Michael Grabowski. I live at 51 Condor Ave, along with my wife, and we oppose this deferral.
You oppose it whatever here today? Okay. So, thank you very much. So let's bring the agent back, and -- Yes, exactly. So you heard that he does not support your deferral request. So I think, do you have any question to the applicant? No? So we are in committee. Let's discuss this. We only have one speaker, and then, yes.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the neighbors' interest in proceeding, but I think, given that transportation has asked for some conditions, and that may, in fact, affect this application, either improve or perhaps not, I think we should give the applicant the opportunity to go back and revise. And in the event that there hasn't been discussions with the neighbors, then perhaps that would be appropriate as well.
Yes, that's what, I agree.
So I'll move approval, I'll move deferral.
Yeah, so anyone second? Mr. Bissonnet, second? Number 26? All in favor for the deferral? Inanimously defer, yeah. Ryan, okay. We're going back to number 19?
Yes.
Okay. Number, item number 19 is 14 Mackenzie Avenue. This is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a cover front porch and a rear uncovered ground floor porch, and also to construct a one-story, a studio building, which is a three-car garage. And the committee have received a copy of the minutes from the last hearing, February 14 hearing, copy of survey site, revised site plan for plans and elevations, cover letter from the agent, and corresponding from the agent, a list of comparable committee adjustment approval and presentation material, and City, Toronto City Council heritage decision. And we have also received comment from city planning, and we have urban forestry comment. In support, we have 20 and 23 Mackenzie Avenue. In opposition, we have 55 Dale Avenue, and also two other addresses on Mackenzie Avenue. Yes, the agent, then.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online, and we also have three registered speakers in opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Maureen Zabzuni at 11:40 the Queen's Way.
Yes. You have some opposition here, we require you to give us a brief five-minute presentation.
Happy to. So it's been nearly a year since we applied for this project, and since then, we've worked very closely with city planning and the Heritage Department. We have made changes to what you see here today. Essentially, we've improved the front yard setback, 3.84 meters, to now 6.26 meters. This was at the request of city planning and the Heritage Department. We have also reduced the building length from 22.10 meters to now 20.32 meters, which we're proposing here today. And we have significantly reduced the size of the rear garage structure to help with the proposed variances, and also the existing trees at the back of the property, and to more coincide with several other three-car garage existing structures on Dale Avenue, which is quite common. So we were waiting for Heritage Department to go through their approval process. We worked and changed, actually, the exterior design and elevations, which there's a rendering on our proposed supporting material. There was a lot of details and back-and-forth working with them to make sure that they're happy with the design. Also, these variances and changes were done, not only to support planning and heritage, but we do take into account some of the feedback from the neighbors as well. So we feel that after all this time, energy, the revisions we've put in, the support from the city, that our proposal overall meets the four tests. We even, variances five, six, seven, and eight have to do with the garage auxiliary structure, which city planning is in support of after the changes we've made. And they understand also that the newly acquired building debt variance is due to pushing back the building to improve the front yard setback, as the building debt is measured from the minimum front yard setback line. Please let me know if you have any questions.
So we probably will hold our question to you until we hear the oppositions. Yeah, after we hear the opposition.
Through you, Madam Chair. We'll call up Martin Reed.
Hi. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Martin Reed. I live at 58 Dale Avenue. I know how lucky I am to live in this heritage conservation area. Mackenzie is one of the nicest streets in Rosedale. I've included two or three photographs which I took. They're not very high quality, but you will probably get the picture. Over the last 22 years that I have lived on Dale Avenue, there have been a lot of construction on Mackenzie, including total demolition and rebuild. Over the years, the builders have followed the bylaws and the fact that we are a heritage conservation district, and the charm and integrity of Mackenzie Avenue has been maintained. We are now faced with a developer who does not want to follow the rules and is trying to put up a mega mansion. You have the details of all of the bylaws which are not being adhered to. Floor space, for example, is 27% over that which is permitted. The length is 19% over that that is permitted, and it goes on and on and on. We certainly acknowledge that the builder has made changes to the proposal and has improved the proposal, but what has not changed is the 27% floor space overrun and the 19% length overrun, and I am opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, thank you very much, yes.
Through you, Madam Chair. We will unmute the owner at 43 Mackenzie Avenue.
I'm unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. It's David Allgood. I live at 43 Mackenzie, and I would support the comments made by the immediately preceding speaker, Martin. And I won't repeat what is in the written submission that we filed with the committee. I guess I would just add that while there are sort of eight variances that are being requested, and one can look at each one of them, decide whether or not they are minor or not. I think the real point is that when looked at all eight together, it means that the proposed building is a variance with the nature and character of the surrounding buildings, governed by the same applicable zoning bylaws. In legal jargon, resipulacra, the thing speaks for itself. I think that, there's an additional comment I would make, is that the owners have, I understand, permission to demolish the existing structure, which has no historical or architectural significance. And given that, they have a clean slate here, and that they can, as Martin suggested, design and build a building that fits within the bylaws, and still will provide them with something that is appropriate for the community and appropriate for them. I would make one aside comment. The picture that was shown of the property with the setback that it had there, maybe 10 or 15 feet, is not the way it will appear on Mackenzie Avenue. It's just off the street. It's been backed up from their original proposal, but it's still very close to the street. Those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. Then we'll unmute the owner at 39 Mackenzie Avenue. Colleen Page? Colleen, are you unmuted?
Thank you. My name is Colleen Page. I live at 39 Mackenzie Avenue, and I'm opposed to the application. The Committee of Adjustment has received at least 18 letters of opposition from neighbors this year, in February, May, and October. Plus, there's been significant opposition in person at previous hearings. And neighbors on the street who have purchased homes on Mackenzie over the last 27 years that I've lived here have spent money making renovations to their houses, and the character of the street has been maintained because of compliance with the zoning bylaws. But this project at 14 Mackenzie will result in a massive structure that will have a huge impact on the neighborhood. When you take all those nine, I think it's nine requested variances together, including the front yard and side yard setbacks, the length and the depth of the building relative to the lot area, and the other variances, the result is a massive and imposing structure relative to the lot area. So as neighbors, we've spent a lot of time to consider the applicant revised commitments, but there still remains significant opposition to the project. So I ask that the Committee of Adjustment recognize that the requested variance, when taken all together, will result in a building that's undeserved for the neighborhood, and it'll have a huge impact on the character of the street.
Question?
Yeah, we--
Ms. Page, if I might, it may be unfair to ask this of you, as opposed to the other two previous speakers, but, you know, you're across the street, others were across and down and in behind. I wonder, I appreciate your concerns about the character of the neighborhood and the impact this might be, but what's the actual impact on you personally and your home?
Because I, we purchased our house on that street because it's a nice neighborhood. And when you have a building across the street from you that's very close to the street alongside other homes, it's out of line with the streetscape, because it's so far forward, closer to the street than the other homes are.
Right, so mostly, you just, you think it doesn't fit?
It doesn't fit. It's oversized for the lot area that it's on, both sideways and setback from the street.
Okay, but there's no, other than that, there's no real impact on you personally?
Personally? No, because I, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? So let's have the next one.
Through you, Madam Chair. We'll bring back the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to address all three neighbors' concerns, starting with Mr. Martin Reed from 58 Dale Avenue. So we did work with Heritage to design a red brick traditional home that fits in the area. If you'll take note, the existing three-story structure has actually a larger mass, and we would argue that does not fit the area the way it sits on the property. The proposed variances are also in line with other approvals in the area. I understand the neighbor's concern is we should meet all the bylaws, but as you know, that's quite challenging in today's needs, and there are many proposed dwellings that go through the Committee of Adjustment process and have those variances reviewed based on its merits. And one of the barriers and professional reviews from that is city planning, which we've worked very closely with, and they are in support with the revised, updated two-story dwelling that we see here today. In regards to our other neighbor at 43 Mackenzie, Mr. David, so he mentioned that there's a lot of variances, eight variances for this dwelling, which is actually not true. The variances are not specifically just for the dwelling itself. Four of these variances are related to the rear detached garage, and they are minor in nature. To address Ms. Colleen from 39 Mackenzie Avenue, as stated, the massing of the proposed dwelling is improved compared to the existing three-story structure. And we worked very closely with, again, city planning and the Heritage Department, and councillor reviewed and supported this application. We uploaded the decision notice from Heritage to show that the massing, the design, the setbacks, even the east side carefully designed to meet the as-built environment and the neighborhood. So both neighbors, even existing structure, are quite large en massing. Our proposed structure, proposed dwelling, is actually improved compared to the existing three-story structure, and even the third floor is quite large of the existing dwelling in terms of height and quite opposing. So we would say that we're improving the street view and streetscape here. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Yes, I do have one question. You have asked for a side yard setback on the west side to, from 1.5 to 1.22. Is it, in comparison with the existing building, are you reducing it?
So if you look at the site plan, essentially, it's virtually in line with existing dwelling. However, in the middle portion of our proposed dwelling, we comply with the setback. So we're only asking the 1.22 meters on the front and rear portion, and we comply on the middle portion of the proposed dwelling.
Okay, so, but the existing building itself now is comply with the 1.5, and you have reduced it a little bit by foot, right?
The existing building does not comply--
Not comply.
With the 1.5, I believe. It's, if you look at the dashed lines of the existing dwelling, it's essentially in line with the proposed 1.2 meters. So we would say that we're improving the setback here in terms of having a portion of the dwelling comply, and also not having a three-story structure, but instead having a two-story dwelling.
Thank you. Yes, we have more questions here, yes.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of questions, if I may, because this is intended to be a completely new construction. I'm looking at variance number one. What would, so I'll give you my questions, and then you can respond if you don't mind. So what would prevent you from complying with the front yard setback? The second question I have is, what is the current FSI of this building that exists currently?
Yes, so to answer your first question, so if we were to push the house, the dwelling, back even further, we would not be able to comply with a rear yard soft landscaping requirement. Because we are proposing a rear three-car garage, which many of the neighbors already have existing, and we already have reduced the rear deck sides, we need enough adequate green space to comply with that variance, but also for the homeowners to enjoy their backyard. We worked with Heritage and planning to propose the front yard setback to essentially be in line with the neighbors. If you look at the site plan, you'll see that it is. So we feel that this variance is quite minor in nature. To answer your second question, don't quite have the full existing square footage of the existing three-story dwelling in front of me, but the proposed FSI is still in line with other approvals in the area. We did upload a supporting material chart that shows other FSI variances, and city planning has no concern with this variance as well.
If you were to guess, you're asking for 0.76 times. You're allowed 0.6. What would you guess roughly, the current would be, current FSI?
I would guess would not be too far different, as the existing dwelling is a three-story. So that adds on each floor.
Thank you.
I think I have another question. It's in the supplemental material that we have received, a staff report. It's talked about some, can we bring that up? Because I'm sort of confused that, because it mentions some kind of residential tenancy and some conditions that the city planning impose. I do not know whether this apply to this application. You see, yeah, this page. You see, yeah, this page.
Yes, so this is from the Housing Committee, not city planning. So the Housing Committee's planner, Denise, I believe, is on this letter. We've been working with the homeowners to ensure that the existing tenants have found a new place to move and receive compensation. So we've been working with them for months, many months, and we have addressed their concerns and accommodated their needs. So we have no concerns here for this application.
Okay, so you have imposed these conditions. You're okay with, you already comply?
No problem, absolutely.
Okay, then, all right. So any more question to the applicant? No, we do not have any more question for you. So we are in committee now. I just thought maybe from a very small comment is that it's a new build. I just thought that the side yard setback, because this is a nice, nice area, and all these houses are quite historic and all, and I thought that it's only that little bit they can actually comply and deleting the side yard setback so that at least the separation between houses sort of like maintained. I just thought that is a shame that they, just a little bit, they will not comply with. That's my one comment.
Sabrina?
I know, I just wish that they could, they would at least try to, a little bit, then they will comply with this. I think in some, a lot of neighborhood is the separation of the houses or dwellings create the character of the street. And it's very compact, I have no problem with everyone, but then if it's all-
Yeah, I'm just looking at the site plan, so I'm looking at the setback, and it's more or less the same as the setback from the adjacent property, right?
Foot, that's what I mean. They could have complied, that's what I'm saying.
I guess so, but it's no more egregious than the next-door neighbor is relative to the lot line. It's basically the same setback. My only observation on this one is, you know, this is the third time they've been back. They have, this applicant has now made changes, I think in response to what they heard from the surrounding community. And I think originally the Ratepayers Association was concerned, and I think the Ratepayers Association, I don't see anything from them, so I'm going to assume that they no longer have any outstanding concerns. And I think Heritage had some initial concerns about the structure. I'm going to assume if we were to approve it, that we attach a condition that it requires some sort of approval from Heritage. But I, you know, given what was originally, I did go back and look at the original application, and it was large, and I think, you know, the neighbors may have had a legitimate concern with the size of both the main structure and the ancillary building. But I think the applicants now heard that and come back with a more modest proposal. I appreciate that, you know, the residents are concerned that it doesn't fit in, but you know, that, there isn't really an ask, I think I'd ask the same of the other two that spoke today, and I don't think there'd be a real direct impact of this application on their personal property. The concern is mostly about massing and look. And as we've talked about in this committee many times, neighborhoods do go into transition, things do change. I think this application is measurably better than what's there now. And I think the variances that are now before us are reduced from what they were previously and now are in that area, which to me appears relatively minor. So given the track record and history on this one, and what the applicant has done to come back with a modified proposal, I think it's now supportable.
Okay, and please, Mr. Beyer-
Just like two cents worth, I think what Mr. Clay's saying is quite appropriate, because if you look at the previous deferred application, the building length, I think you're asking 22 meters. Currently, it's 20.32, so they've actually shortened the property. And certainly, the ancillary building at the back has been reduced quite considerably. I would like to have seen perhaps that the front yard setback was a little more improved, but given the fact that it's not too far from, 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 looking at the site plan, I think it's not too far from where the original building seems to have been. It's not really far off that. I don't see many of the variances being really problematic. They're all generally minor in nature, so I think this is a supportable application.
Okay, yes, Philip?
No, no real comments. I think the original application, the front yard setback was pretty egregious, but they've done a lot to address it by how they've reduced it. So I tend to agree with my colleagues' comments. There's been a lot of improvement over the course of this coming back.
Yeah, back to, back to the February application, actually, the staff report recommend to refuse it. So from refusal to now, they don't have any comments. I think it's a quick, it's a trial.
Chair, I'm happy to move a motion on this one, if you like.
Yes, please, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve this application, subject to forestry conditions one and two. Also to, I think planning has some conditions with respect to, which sounds like they've already met, but let's build that in as well, or SIPA conditions. I didn't see any sign-off from Heritage, so can we put a condition in that, I don't know how to word it, Sabrina?
Through you, Madam Chair. Would just be our standard condition. I believe they had commented previously, so we can use that condition.
Okay, that's great, thanks.
Heritage condition, okay.
And I think that's it. I don't think we need any additional conditions with respect to privacy or such. So I think that's basically it.
So that's a motion on the floor. Mr. Beyer, second, with the conditions all in favor, unanimously approved with the conditions. Okay. Now, we move to item number 20, is 56 Summer Hill Gardens. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition with a rear gun floor deck and stairs and a rear second-floor deck. And we also, also to construct a third fourth addition and rebuild the enclosed front porch. And then the existing rear addition and rear ground floor that will be demolished. We also received the last, minutes of the last hearing and copy of surveys, floor plans and, floor plans and elevations, cover letter from the agent, and another cover letter from the agent, and copy of corresponding from the agent and the planner, and presentation material from the agent. We also received comment from natural within feature protection and support letter from 58 Summer Hill Gardens.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agents here in person. No registered speakers for this item. Not sure if you need a presentation?
Yeah, exactly. Well, I'm, let me, look, please, give us your name and address first, and then we'll go on from there.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. My name is Kirsten Thompson. My address is 113 Montrose Avenue, and I'm representing the owners, Jason DeLuca, being one of them, at 56 Summer-
Thank you. You do not have any opposition? Let me check with tenor whether they want a presentation from-
Just a quick, so you've made some improvements, right? Can you just give us a very quick review of what the improvements are that you made from the last time you were here?
Well, really, the last time we were here, we deferred because we were waiting on a geotechnical report from engineers to locate the long-term stable top slope. TRCA needed that in order to review our application, because they couldn't determine-
Okay, so the application's more or less the same, you were just waiting on that?
Well, no, we did have to, based on the new location of the line that was different from a previous report, we did make some adjustments, and they are now-
Happy.
Supported the design in principle, based on the location of the line.
Perfect, thank you.
So we, we read the material, so now we're getting just questions. If any more questions to the applicant? No? So we do not have any more question, and you addressed, you know, why we deferred, and now we are in committee.
If I may start off, I remember the application, and it's wonderful to hear that the applicants have finally got to the point where, you know, they can hear some good news. I certainly think this is an appropriate application to approve. I don't believe there are any conditions attached to this one. No, I don't see any conditions unless I'm wrong. So it's one that's eminently supportable at this stage. I think they've gone through all the hoops, and yeah, here we are.
So do we have a motion? Do you have more-
I'd like to move a motion to approve no conditions.
Okay, a second? Yes, and Mr. Philip, second. All in favor of no conditions, approved. Thank you for coming, is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number 21 is 53 Beancroft Road. This is to alter existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear two-story addition and with a rear basement walkout, and also to construct a rear terrace. We received minutes of the last hearing, and also copy of the revised site plan, 14 photographs of trees and cover letter, also email corresponding from the agent, presentation material from the agent, and also we received comment from transportation engineering and the staff report from Heritage Planning, and also from the within natural feature protection. And that's all we have received, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Yes. Yeah, can you give us your name and address for the backcourt?
Steven Lindy, architect and agent of the proposal. I'm located at 48 Bedford Park Avenue in Toronto.
Okay, thank you. You do not have any opposition for your, for your application? I'm going to see whether we require a presentation from you. No, anyone wants? It seems that we do not need a presentation from you. You may have questions. You have any questions? I just wait for, no, no questions? Okay, we do not have any questions either? Oh, we do have one, yeah.
Just give me a second to my notes. I think I had a question, but it might be.
Actually, I do have a quick question, just for clarification, as, as, it seems that you, you are required to have a heritage permit, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm aware of that. Heritage approval conditions are acceptable.
Yes, so the question is that since they, you already require a permit, we do not need to put any conditions that you will have?
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Yeah, they're recommending it there, and in fact, that was my note, was to-
Impose.
Consider the heritage issues, but I think the, I think imposing the heritage condition is probably-
Okay.
All we need to do, so I actually don't have any questions.
Well, I thought that it was maybe redundant, that's all. Okay, we do not have any more questions. Do you have anything you want to address the panel before we move into discussion?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's fine.
That's fine, okay, now we are in committee. All right.
Chair, I'll take this one. This is a very modest proposal. It's just a minor addition to the rear back corner of the structure, and it doesn't go any further than the structure, or portion of the structure on the opposite side. It looks like they've gotten TRCA onside, so I think this is a very modest proposal. I think the variances before us are quite minor. I'd be happy to move approval of this application, subject to heritage condition.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Brinson, second. All in favor, unanimously approved with no, with the heritage conditions? Okay, so we move to item 22, which is, sorry, item 22 is 168 and 170 McCall Street. This is to convert the existing three-story mixed-use, which contain four residential dwelling and with non-residential uses with the, in the basement and the ground floor, and into a hotel building, which will contain 10 units. There will be no, there will be no non-residential use on the ground floor and outdoor patio and a second level, and a second-level terrace. We have received public minutes from the public hearing, last public hearing, and we see for surveys, site plan, revised site plan, floor plan, the elevation, two photographs of the property, cover letter from the agent, and also planning personnel from the agent. We received material, presentation material, and also we have comment from transportation engineering.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent here in person. We also have two registered speakers here in person.
Oh, they're all in, all right.
Through you, Madam Chair. They are in opposition.
They are in opposition, yes. Okay, so you do have some opposition. Can you give us your name, the name and the address, and then we can proceed with your presentation?
My name's Jaclyn Lee, and I'm here on behalf of Upstate Canada, the client with Patori Planning and Management for 168 and 170 McCall Street. And I do have a presentation, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. We're here on behalf of our client today to go over this application. Next slide, please. In 2017, the city initiated a study that found that there was a need for hotel development in the city, and these findings were further supported by a 2022 report analyzing the economic impact to local tourism and hospitality industries pre and post pandemic, as well as our discussions with the city's economic development and culture staff. It's understood that both the existing and rebound in hotel developments have been largely focused in the luxury and upper upscale markets due to factors such as high land and construction costs, and that there is a need for mid-range hotels, particularly those that accommodate families. Next slide, please. The subject site is generally rectangular in shape and abuts a laneway along the south property line. It's currently occupied by vacant three-story mixed-use building and is designated and zoned for mixed-use developments, which permit a hotel use. Next slide, please. The site is located in the Baldwin Village community within the greater Kensington-Chinatown neighborhood in Toronto, and as you can see, it's nestled in between some of the city's most iconic and popular destinations, particularly amongst tourists and visitors. Next, please. The area is well-supported by transit and active transportation infrastructure. It's less than a five-minute walk to Osgood and Queens Park subway stations, TTC Street car routes 505 and 506, and as well as cycling infrastructure. Next slide, please. Looking at the surrounding context, the Baldwin Village commercial neighborhood is characterized by low-density residential buildings turned into local shops and restaurants. Here's photos from the Baldwin Village and Grange neighborhoods, and the bottom left even shows a little hop-on, hop-off bus driving across, driving in front of the A2. Sorry, next slide, please. Within a slightly expanded scope, it's easy to see that the broader context is mutually beneficial to the proposed hotel use, providing a convenient, walkable, and robust amenity scheme for visitors to support local businesses contributing to a thriving economy. Next slide, please. The application before the committee today is to permit variances to facilitate the conversion of a three-story mixed-use building into a boutique hotel containing units of varying types and sizes. Given the fit of the existing red brick building in the Baldwin Village character area and its architectural interest, the proposed development seeks to maintain the building's historic integrity and adaptively reuse it with only minor exterior changes. The first of the two variances is to bring the existing total FSI to conformity with the zoning bylaw and to increase the maximum non-residential FSI to the same amount. And as you can see, the property from a site plan perspective remains unchanged. Next, please. This is the front elevation. The architectural integrity of the building is kept. Next, please. The second variance is to reduce the separation distance between the building walls on the same lot to allow for light wells, which will use frosted glass to maintain privacy while providing for natural light to filter into the units that are below grade and on the first level. These are the floor plans highlighting where those light wells would be located. Next slide, please. These are images showing the street view, looking west directly onto the building facade, and another looking south down McCall Street. And last slide, please, or sorry, the conclusion slide. Since the deferred meeting, there has been additional community outreach and correspondence with neighbors and resident associations to address concerns resulting in previous letters of opposition being withdrawn and letters of support also being provided. Some- of opposition being withdrawn and letters of support also being provided, some of which were not able to upload into the AIC due to late submissions, but they were confirmed by the application technician as having been received. The proposed development appropriately supports the intent and objectives of the official plan for mixed-use areas by facilitating a use that contributes to the local economic development. It fits well within the existing context and respects the neighborhood character district and benefits from the location's access to amenities, transit, and walkability. We've also spoken with staff and ensured that there are no objections to the variances requested nor the proposal overall. Staff have also confirmed that there is a market gap for mid-range hotel accommodations within Ward 11 and particularly units which can comfortably accommodate families. It's our opinion that the minor variances satisfy the four tests of section 45.1 of the Planning Act and represent good planning. Thank you.
I have a quick question, a technical question. So I'll confess, I didn't quite understand variances three and four. I don't think I've ever seen variances three and four. Were those related to the light wells?
Those were related to the light wells, yeah. So normally if there's an opening in the wall and within the building that's facing each, the walls are facing each other on the same lot, there are minimum distances that need to be maintained. So it's like five and a half meters, sorry, five and a half...
It should be five and a half meters wide for that opening?
Yes, and then 11 meters if there are two openings that are facing each other.
Wow, never... So if you have a door, for example, instead of a light well, would that same variance...
Right, so normally that's made to maintain privacy and overlook, or to maintain privacy and minimize overlook-related issues. This one, because we're doing it as a light well, the client is using frosted glass, so privacy is not really, I guess, they're trying to mitigate the privacy concerns in that way. And the units themselves are also going to be configured in a way where they don't really have impact on privacy.
I can add to it. Actually, these variants come to my notice is that for tiny houses mainly.
Oh, okay. I've never, I don't recall seeing it. That's interesting.
When they're facing each other, there's a minimum distance to maintain some kind of, it's not even just privacy, but also maybe what they call it, comfort zone.
That's right. Thank you very much, that was a good explanation.
So, yeah, we will, yeah, to listen to the oppositions.
Through you, Madam Chair, there are two speakers here in person. One by one, come up to the podium.
George Turney left because he had to. So I'm Max Allen, I'm the only speaker. The light wells...
Yeah, can you tell us your name and your address, please?
My name is Max Allen. My address is 78 St. Patrick. I'm the president of the Grange Neighborhood Association, which encompasses this site. The light wells include a window that's about this big. It's the only window in those bedrooms, in those hotel rooms, and it's frosted glass. This is an unusual and challenging application, but what matters to the committee, in fact, all that matters, is whether the application satisfies the four tests. We conclude that indeed it does meet the requirements of one of the tests, but it fails the other three, and we urge the committee to refuse the application. I want to emphasize that during the hearings today, I think I'm right, in that every question that you had to address had to do with the size and shape of the building that was before you. This application has, this complaint that I have, has to do with the function of the building, not the size and shape of it. After the September 4th public hearing held in this room, the applicant and the planner and the other neighbors and I wrote back and forth about the application. The lead applicant lives in Ottawa. His company is associated with an American investment syndicate called Upstate, which deals in high-class private mansions, I would call them, they're gorgeous, and boutique lodgings. The heart and purpose of his application today is to convert a mixed-use building on McCall Street containing some non-residential units, uses, and four large residential dwelling units, that is, three-bedroom apartments, into a 10-unit hotel, eliminating the existing residential dwelling units altogether. Hotel units and residential units are different. The difference is set out by the Canada Revenue Agency, and it says that hotel units are meant for travelers as opposed to city residents. These days, all across Canada, all orders of government and all kinds of citizens are obsessed with housing. Where will residents live? How will they afford it? What kinds of housing will they live in? Everybody agrees that we're in the midst of a great housing crisis. So where can the committee turn in order to determine provincial intentions about housing? To see if any given development proposal or variance request like this one matches provincial intentions about housing. Legislation is one way, of course, but there's also a whole bunch of little-known documents called news releases that Queen's Park issues to say what they're up to. So what about this application and the four tests? Well, the building, which has been part of our neighborhood for about a century now, clearly fits, and there's no proposal here to change the fit externally. The FSI variances are less than minor, they're in fact invisible. So the application passes the first test. But the applicant proposes to destroy the rental housing that's on the site in favor of a tourist hotel, and there is no convincing evidence that small tourist hotels are needed or wanted in downtown Toronto. The effect of the requested variances run up against the functional test of, quote, "disrupting" the residential uses within the neighborhood. This is a phrase that's used in the applicant's planning opinion. The provincial planning statement 2024, and I cite the place where it says this, mandates, quote, "all types of residential intensification, including the development and redevelopment of underutilized commercial and institutional sites for residential use." The More Homes Build Faster Act 2022, introduced as Bill 23, and the Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act, introduced as Bill 185, all emphasize the crisis of Ontario's inadequate housing supply. Yet the applicant proposes to reduce the housing supply even further and substitute hotel rooms.
You have just up to five minutes, can you give us a quick summation of your...
Sure, can I read my last sentence?
Okay, yes, yeah.
"We urge the committee to dismiss this application that creates a hotel. A revised application, billed according to the submitted plans, could make a fine and much-needed student residence out of this instead."
Sir, I just want to clarify your concern and interest. You represent the Grange...
Community Association.
You mean, so is that a residents association, or is that a residents and business association?
Both. That's the reason we call it that.
Okay, so I take your concern about losing rental accommodation, but in its place you have potentially 10 units of tourists who are going to spend in your community.
Yes.
So do you not, I see there's a bit of paradox here in my mind about your organization's position. Wouldn't the introduction of some tourists that are going to spend money in the surrounding area going to be good for your association?
It would be if the provincial government said it would be, but what the provincial government and the federal government and the city government are all saying now is that housing is the number-one concern.
Fair enough, fair enough. And that's your organization's biggest concern, is the loss of what looks like three residential rental units?
I'm suggesting that should be the committee's main concern, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, so any more questions? Okay, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, then the other speaker that was here in person has left. We also had someone online from 145 Beverly Street, Unit 5. We've made multiple attempts, have not been able to reach them, so we'll bring back the agent for that, for this item. Jaclyn?
Jaclyn. Shall I leave? Yes.
So you will have five minutes to address the concerns.
Okay, and Madam Chair, there's also another person online, who is Andrew, the owner of the property and client from Upstate Canada. If you're able to unmute him, I think he'd also like to address some of the questions that were heard.
You will share the five minutes?
Yes, we're going to be sharing the five minutes. I can do a quick start, though. I understand that Mr. Allen's concerns have to do with the residential units that are being removed and replaced with the housing units. I just wanted to confirm that having a mixed-use neighborhood designation doesn't mean that every individual property needs to be used as such. It means that we want a mixed-use community with a mix of uses, which can include standalone uses. And despite the units being converted from residential to hotel units, it's an appropriate readaptation of the existing building into a hotel use, which is permitted and which staff also support. I'd like to note that in my presentation, the last slide, I just put that in there for reference, that there are over 1,700 new residential units that are proposed within 250 meters of the subject site. Secondly, we have confirmed with staff from CIPA, the Strategic Initiatives Policy and Analysis Department, that they're satisfied with their response to questions regarding the existing tendencies, or former tendencies, and the residential units that were part of this building. This application provides a supply of large, short-term residential units, which are currently being offered through services such as Airbnb and neighborhoods designations where long-term rental supply is intended. Currently, there's over 1,400 Airbnb units in just the Kensington-Chinatown neighborhood, 182 of which are two bedrooms and 142 are three bedrooms. And the City of Economic Development, Economic Development Department has confirmed that there's not enough hotels in the downtown core, particularly those within the moderate market catering to families, and that there's a mandate to support more of this type of hotel development. And I'll switch it over to Andrew, who can give more insight.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here presenting in front of you guys, and I just want to say so. My wife and I are the owner of the property. I actually also designed the hotel myself, and, you know, we are not a syndicate or anything like that. I'm the owner and I'm the operator. And I basically had started my career in Disney World, where we manage hotels that cater to families who want to come and visit Disney World together, and it's just been an incredible experience. And when I look at Toronto, all the hotels right now are just micro studios, you know, only two people can stay in hotel rooms. And so I want to devise two-bedroom and three-bedroom hotel suites. I think they're fantastic. They attract families, they are a legal alternative to Airbnb, which, you know, is a cancer that takes over these neighborhoods. And of course, you know, families have to choose between a micro studio or an illegal, you know, large Airbnb. Clearly, a lot of these guys are going towards Airbnb. And so I think that if we can offer these big, family-sized units, I think it's going to be fantastic for the community, and I think it's going to get rid of, you know, the demand for short-term rentals, which I think everybody can agree is a good thing. I really enjoyed communicating with the community for the building, and we made a lot of changes. You know, community feedback makes projects way better, unequivocally, and I changed my loading stuff and my garbage and all this kind of stuff based on that feedback. I would say, though, like, I never heard back from Max ever. I reached out to him at least a dozen times via email, and I wish we could have communicated. The argument he made from the CRA's definition would suggest that no hotels should ever exist, which obviously I totally disagree with. Also, the economic, the Visitor Economy Strategic Directions Report for 2023 to 2028 puts a really strong emphasis on local tourism. And why not? Like, this is, it's a beautiful area, we've got the AGO steps away, and so many really cool attractions and sites and cultural areas for people to explore. And, you know, right now, the entire area, it's luxury hotels and upper-premium hotels, which are super not affordable, you know? And so I just think that this really fits a market gap. I think a hotel itself is already an intended use within the CR zoning, so I'm not asking to change the intended uses, I'm already complying with that. And, you know, we really did put a lot of effort into choosing a site that had minimal impact on residential units. It's a super fair concern, it is a concern, I totally acknowledge that. And, you know, the bottom line is, we really tried to be kind of as gentle as we could there. And when we took over the building, you know, half of it, there are four residential units, two of them were vacant, one of them vacated on their own really quickly, and then the fourth person had only been there for 15 months and basically took a cash payout. And so we've been, you know, really trying to, you know, be mindful of that side of things. So that's kind of how I see it. I will also say that, you know, this is going to be a staffed hotel, we're going to have our employees on site. Most of our employees come from the Four Seasons, which is obviously an iconic Toronto-based hotel chain, and I really hope you guys approve the application. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? No more questions? Yeah, you do have a question?
I have a question. I saw a few withdrawals of opposition, and I wondered what outreach took place to result in the withdrawals of opposition.
So I probably had something like 30 emails back and forth with a trainee family, George, who was here earlier, and also several phone calls with him as well. So some of the opposition, people were concerned I was building a rooming house instead of a hotel. I don't know why that is, I guess there's another developer in the area who's doing that. But once I talked to those residents and I explained kind of my background and who I am, they immediately realized this is obviously a hotel and not a rooming house. And then George's primary concerns was about delivery. He really doesn't want to have deliveries made at the front of the building from like, I guess, for food delivery in Amazon and stuff. And so I created a rear entry and like loading zone in the back of the building, which basically addressed his primary concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, we don't have any more questions, now we are in committee. I'd like to make this a first comment. It's also this kind of small-scale hotel, at the location of this, has anyone noticed that it's very close to all the hospitals?
I did notice that.
Yeah, and then I know that Donald Madonna House is trying to fill that need. I think, and obviously, they don't come alone, they come with family to the project. So I think that that may also serve that need.
I find the application supportable. I think it's a unique proposal, and I think it would be an asset to the community.
And I was happy to hear that it was going to be moderated twice.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of more of the...
Well, we'll search Expedia later to see if they meet that, but, no, I was looking at the plans, it didn't read as a hotel, but having heard all the submissions, I'm convinced it is. So that was my only concern, was that maybe they weren't applying for the right, for the right things, but it sounds like they are.
Any more comments?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, could you just turn on your microphone? I think it might have...
Oh, yes, I turned it off just to make, yeah, not a problem. Okay, now I can hear, I can hear myself now. Okay, so any more comments or do we have a motion? Yeah, Mr. Byatt?
Motion, Chair. I think this is the second time that I've heard this application come through, of course. It's a, as you've said in... It's a, as you've said and my colleagues here have said, I think this is an excellent project. Great use for this building. And I think the immediate neighborhood, particularly the restaurants and small businesses, will benefit immensely. So I'd like to move a motion to approve the application. There are no, no conditions attached.
Second, Mr. Beeson, Beeson, sorry, it's very late in the afternoon. Yeah, thank you. Second, and all in favor? Inadvisably approved with no condition. Okay. Now we make it to item number 24. Is it 24? Oh, no.
Yeah, 24. The other one was...
Okay, 24. Yeah. Number 24 is 534 Harvey Avenue.
Do you want a break?
Yeah. Oh, okay. We are going to have a five-minute break. Yes.
Guys, guys, your mic, phone is on. Hopefully you weren't saying anything controversial.
I'm used to it.
Technical information.
Technical information, that's fine. Oh, you're exposing all our secrets to the public.
It's technology, right? What can you say? Magic finger.
And it makes Sabrina get up and do everything.
Yes. She's just got magic finger. So, okay, we are back, and we are going to hear item number 24, 534 Harvey Avenue. This is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling, which is a triplex with cover porches, south side, second floor balcony, and then we are ground floor deck and we have third floor balcony. And have new front yard parkings for two vehicles. And also construct a three-story ancillary building containing a garden suite with a south side, third floor balcony and a green roof. And there will be a total of four residential dwelling on this lot. And we receive the minutes of last public hearing and a copy of survey, revised site plan, four plans elevations, revised site plan, and we, oh, sorry, it's very late in the afternoon. And four photographs of the trees and arborist report, and also a planning rationale from the agent. We receive comments from urban forestry and also advisory comment from MetroLink. We receive opposition from 536 Harvey Avenue.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent here in person, and we have a couple of registered speakers.
Okay.
One in person and one online.
And they are all in opposition?
Yes.
Yes. So you do have some opposition. Can you give us your name and address, and you'll give us a five-minute presentation?
Sure. My name is Evan Saskin of Blue Lion Building. Before we start the timer, there's been a revision to the...
Okay, let's go through those and then before your presentation. Okay, let's go through that.
It's fairly minimal, but it's the reason that planning removed their objection letter. So variances 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 are unchanged. Variance 12 has been reduced. We had initially sought a maximum height of 9.8 meters, and we've reduced that to 7.4 meters.
7.4, okay.
Variance 13 is eliminated. The garden suite will be two stories.
Okay.
Variance 14 is unchanged. 15 and 16 are unchanged. And 17 will still be a variance. You're only allowed platforms on the ground floor of garden suites. And here, there's a balcony on the second story. But as originally phrased, it talks about the south side, third story, and has the south side, second story.
Okay. Also, you still require variance for, even on the second story?
You're only allowed balconies on ground floor. Like, you're allowed a deck on the ground floor of a garden suite. Laneway suites are allowed balconies on the second floor, but not garden suites.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, do you still have a height variance for the garden suite?
I do, and I'll get into this. It's because of the way that height is measured.
Okay.
This garden, I'll get that.
Okay. And then through you, Madam Chair, sorry. The purpose of application, then, will change to read a two-story garden suite instead of a...
I think that would be, yes.
A three-story. So I just want to clarify that. Okay.
Okay. So we got all the changes, right? So I...
You've seen the forestry recommendations, right?
The old one that they've retracted or the new one? I can respond to them both.
Please, if you could take us through all this, it seems like it's a pretty much of a moving target for us.
Can I take five minutes to present, five minutes to respond? And then if you have questions about the reports, I could address them at that time.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly.
Madam Chair?
I'm so sorry.
Sorry. Who is the chair for my deferral? I apologize.
I'm sort of a little bit, are we going to have the presentation now?
Yeah.
Okay. So everything's ready. We start the clock.
Great. You have my name? Okay. I'm here representing the owner of 534 Harvey as the architect of record on this project. And five minutes long is not a long time to cover 16 variances. So there are topographical and geographic adjacencies, which in my professional opinion, either create or justify all of the variances. I've submitted a planning rationale exploring the four tests in depth. But for speed and clarity today, I'm going to consider the variances in three chunks, because a lot of them repeat the same built form. There are setbacks of the triplex variances, there's open landscape deficiencies, and there's the size and shape of the garden suite. We're not seeking variances today for height or the more restrictive main wall height, nor depth, nor length, nor the number of units, or the footprint size, or density, or anything generally associated with bigness. In our detailed conversations with junior and senior planning staff, ravine natural features in urban forestry, no municipal professional ever asked for any change to the triplexes form. And having opposed the garden suite's height a month ago, where we deferred, planning staff has withdrawn their letter of objection as a way to communicate their support to you. The main building's front yard setback just follows the existing front yard setback, which is aligned with the neighbors to the south, and responds to the convex curvature of the front lot line and the street. The side setbacks have been carefully modulated to minimize negative impacts while still providing high-quality, family-friendly housing units. As you look at the floor plans, floor by floor, you'll see that the setbacks step in and out along the building's length from 0.45 to 1.2 to 1.5 to 2.5 meters around the entries, permitting access to the outdoors and natural light while still respecting privacy and overlook issues. This is not a maxed-out, overbuilt envelope. The zero-meter wall is only proposed in alignment with the current built footprint. The 18-inch wall, while not compliant for this use, is generally for single-family houses, semis, and some two-unit dwellings. And those setback dimensions, 0 and 18 inches, are consistent features of the area. Once you're in this multi-unit territory, the bylaw increases the setback requirement, which I understand is about fire spread concerns. But after that 1.2-meter setback was introduced, the Ontario Building Code has amended 910154 to require buildings with three or more residential units, like this one, to have non-combustible cladding and structure. It's a little wonky, but my point is that the intent of the bylaw will necessarily be met at the permitting stage. Meanwhile, tighter side yard setbacks are a consistent feature of the neighborhood, as indeed my two neighbors have 11-inch and 2-inch setbacks respectively from our south and north property lines. The landscape variances are really about managing stormwater and preserving green space. This site slopes an extreme 8 feet 10 inches from front to rear, and at the bottom of that slope is a 105-acre protected natural feature. We don't need to be civil engineers to see that the immediate geography can ably handle stormwater runoff in the most extreme cases. But nevertheless, if you add up all of our ground plane deficiencies, the site as a whole lacks nearly 28 square meters of soft landscaping. And we've proposed a green roof of 50 square meters, which really should count towards the soft landscaping calculations. We'd more than balance that deficiency. Finally, the ancillary building, the garden suite, received intense scrutiny from planning staff with force distinct, we had a lot of meetings and revisions. We've removed a story, eliminated a variance, reduced the height, and the planning and urban forestry letters from last month were withdrawn. A compliant garden suite on this site could never have a second story without invoking minor variances for height and angular plane. Because of the way average grade is calculated on a steeply sloped site, the ground floor is considered to be two feet up. So a perfectly compliant garden suite here would only have 300 square feet. Sorry. It's not like a one-bedroom condo equivalent. Whereas we're providing 1,005 square feet of like desirable living situation. In conclusion, I think and staff agrees that this is precisely the kind of housing that our bylaws were recently redesigned to encourage. There are a lot of little variances invoked by idiosyncrasies of the site because citywide bylaws can't contemplate lots like this with nuance or intelligence. That's what we have a committee of adjustment for. Thank you for your time.
Yes. And so we hold the question to you and listen to the proposition first.
Opposition first, response, question.
And then, yeah, and then we will ask question and also your chance to respond to the comment, yeah. Okay. Thank you. That was your name and the dress, and you have five minutes to give us your concern, yeah, to tell us your concern.
Thank you. So my name is Suzanne Sergi. This is Benny Sergi. We're from 536 Harvey. We're the adjacent property on the north.
Yes.
Okay. Hello, Madam Chair and committee members. Thank you for considering our objections today. We are from 536 Harvey Avenue, adjacent to the subject property. We believe the variances will negatively impact our property, the neighboring property at 532 Harvey in our neighborhood. Many of these 17 bylaw variances will have a direct impact on our property. Our main concern is that our nearly 70-year-old building will only have nine inches of separation, leaving us with no access to the south side if approved. At the zero lot line, the excavation could have a severe impact on our property and roofline and could destabilize the soil under our footings and foundation, which could lead to differential sediment, foundation cracks, drainage issues, weeping tile damages, changes in grade, making it almost impossible to repair. With a story higher front yard setbacks being pushed and the ancillary being guarded in the back, we will lose views on all sides and, more importantly, lose our right to light, leaving us in total darkness on three sides of our building. Not to mention the lack of privacy, loss of views, loss of space openness from the mass heightened bulk of this development. We are very concerned about the two parking spaces and garbage area, which will be adjacent to our front walkway and sitting area. The grotesque odor, possible mess, and potential vehicle hazard alongside our walkway is very concerning. According to bylaw 10.580.12C, the parking or storing of vehicles is no closer to a fence than 1.5 meters. Although this measurement was not provided in a plan, we are not sure if the 1.5 meters will be met on both sides of the parking spaces. This bylaw infraction needs further investigation. We also question whether the garbage bins will be placed on garbage bay for day for four units, ensuring the 0.5 meters is met between each bin, and whether this is possible considering there was two parking spaces in the front of the unit. If allowed, many, many trees' roots will be dug up, compromising the integrity of the protected trees, some of which are in the cemetery with tombstones nearby and literally on the other side of the fence. And from what I understand, urban forestry... And from what I understand, urban forestry has not completely supported the project. We anticipate a road safety concern with loading and loading, unloading of four dwellings and only two parking spaces, especially considering this is across the street from an elementary school and on a major street bend. So, committee members, we ask you to kindly review the four tests when making your decision. Test one is the city's official plan being maintained. With 17 bylaw requests, we would definitely have to say no to test one. This proposal is higher, denser, and the mass and scale is not respectful of nearby neighboring properties. The setbacks from all sides are being challenged, setting an unruly precedence of allowed. Privacy, sky views, adequate separation distance, and use of landscaping and planting will be permanently compromised. Development does not front onto an existing street, but rather the entire side of 532 Harvey, which is a private property. And lastly, this proposal simply does not feel safe from a parking nor a fire safety perspective. Test two is the general intent of the purpose of the bylaw being maintained. With 17 bylaw variances being challenged, then how is the general intent of a zoning bylaw being maintained? Seventeen is a lot of bylaws, variances. That's not minor. Test number three is the proposal appropriate for the development and land of the building. We ask if is the development of four dwellings on a mere 25-foot lot infringing on all setbacks really considered appropriate? This appears to be a clear case of overbuilding. Furthermore, it does not appear to meet the definition of a triplex from toronto.ca. Perspective, since units A, B, and C are not stacked, is this triplex proposal disguised for something else? We highly doubt this will be considered affordable housing, which is what this city's intent is for this type of building. Test four, the variances request minor. This is far from a minor proposal. It disregards Toronto bylaws and suggests the developer prioritizes financial gain over community and safety concerns. If the purpose of the bylaw is to regulate the use of land, bulk, mass, height, location, and erection, and the bylaw does not relieve any person from complying or shying away from conformity and requires one to comply, then why would somebody be able to break 17 bylaws and still consider this a minor variance? This should be reviewed further by the chief planner and beyond. We thank you in advance for your time and consideration in this ruling.
Thank you very much.
Question?
Yeah, we do have a question for you. Just wait, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, yes, go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
So I was looking, you raised the issue about, you know, the setback from the lot line adjacent to your property as being a concern. I was just looking at the survey. I don't know if you can pull the survey up, guys? If you would blow that. So it kind of looks like you're 536, right?
Yes.
So you're pretty close to the lot line already?
We are, yeah, but the building is 70 years old.
Yeah, so I think you raised in your correspondence about the ability or lack of ability for doing maintenance on your side of the house.
Right, if they're going right at zero, that only leaves us nine inches.
How would you do maintenance regardless?
There is 19 inches right now. So with 19 inches, we can fit through?
That's 19 inches? Oh, sorry, it looked like it was virtually right on the line from the survey.
No, 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 there's 19 inches. There's pictures in the report that we sent of something.
Okay.
There's 19 inches between our building and the building next door.
No, I get that. There's 19 inches between the building, but the actual amount of space between your building and your property line is less than that. Looking at the survey anyway, if you look at the survey-
We have nine inches.
Are you able to pull the survey back up again?
Our building and the survey is nine inches on our property.
Okay.
And it will be further reduced as well. It's 19 now, but it will be further reduced when the-
No, I get that. I just didn't look like, that almost looked like it was right on the line. I didn't realize there was nine inches there.
Ours is nine. Theirs is 10.
Okay.
Currently.
We can, we can-
Well, it just doesn't look like it's visually represented as such in that. But fair enough. And secondly, your building is a triplex or duplex?
It is, yeah.
Are you residents there or are you just landlords?
No, we are landlords. We've been landlords for over 25 years with very affordable housing there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Very long-term.
And there is windows on that side where they want to come on the lot line. There are kitchen windows, there are washroom fans, front windows.
Yep, okay, thanks a lot.
Yes. But you assume in the survey, actually, it says 11 upon 1 meter means about four inches.
It's not. We had to get a new survey.
Oh, so-
On 1 meter, that is what, that's what it means, the corner from the lot line. But anyway, thank you. Yeah, you answered the question, sorry. Any question to this speaker anymore? Okay, thank you.
So Madam Chair, then will I unmute the owner at 518 Harvey Avenue?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, we hear you. Can you tell us your name and address? And yeah, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Angelo Nocera. I own 538 Harvey and 518 Harvey. I've lived on the neighborhood for 40 years. I've raised my family, my kids, my grandkids. What this whole project is wrong from the beginning. First off, with the destruction of the trees that the forestry had not approved. And when I had a problem with the tree in front of 518 and did a whole $28,000 damage, I wanted that tree removed. And the city said, we cannot override the forestry's decision of not touching it. Parking on Harvey Avenue is forbidden. There is no standing. Because of the curve and anyone who parks on the side, cars going southbound will have to go into the other lane. A car going northbound, in the 40 years I've been there, I've seen more accidents and a few deaths, literally. And there's a lot of little children around. That's another issue. The garbage is also the issue with the sidewalk. And more importantly, my neighbor at 532 Harvey, Michael, who had to leave because he had to go to work, his privacy. They're staring right into his bedroom window. I am sure the good people of the committee all have significant others and partners. I'm sure you don't want people staring into your bedroom. Just a privacy issue alone and the blockage of the sun. I mean, this is not a triplex. These are townhouses. Once the owner sells them all and he's off to Tahiti, the neighborhood is going to have to deal with the issues of the garbage, the parking, and the privacy issues. And the people who are going to be buying these things don't need to put up with the hassle because they park on the street, they're going to get picketed, they're going to get towed. The parking authority comes around constantly. It's been an issue for years. And it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. I've been there 40 years. There's other neighbors who have been there much longer. If he wants to build a triplex, he can build it the same way as mine and at 540 and at 536, facing outward onto the street, not into a man's bedroom. Just a privacy issue and the parking and the sheer size of this place. It seems to me it's more out of greed than anything else. I've owned 538 Harvey since I was 17. I have affordable housing, three-bedroom apartments. They're about 1,200 square feet. And my rent is under $2,000 a month. In fact, one family only gives me $1,500 a month. This is totally wrong from the get-go. It shouldn't even be considered, in my opinion, anyway. I don't speak as elegant as my neighbor Sue, who has all the bylaws in front of her, but I do agree with her. This isn't just one little problem. This is a whole bunch of problems. And also the fire issue, the last unit down at the end. There's no escape for him. There's a cemetery there with a wall. And we're not allowed to put a fence up or, sorry, a gate to get out because we all used to have one and the cemetery put a stop to that. And this is just wrong in every way you look at it.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? Okay.
Madam Chair, we'll hear from the owner at 532 Harvey.
I thought that that's who he is. He also presenting 532, yeah.
No, he was 518 and 538.
Oh, yes.
Do we not have 532, Michael? Sorry, we're just going to do a call. While we're doing that, through you, Madam Chair, the owner at 534 Harvey is observing. And we did make multiple attempts to contact 550 Harvey, but we had-
No response.
No response from them.
Okay. All right.
I do want to attempt one more time the 532 Harvey because there was a request.
Okay. So, wait.
Michael, you've been unmuted? Michael, you've been unmuted?
It just disconnected again.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. It disconnected twice on us.
Oh, so then shall we go back to the agent?
Then we'll go back to the agent, yes.
Okay.
All right.
First of all, I think maybe you should respond to the issues that can be raised and then we can ask you more questions.
It's a tightly knit community. I've had many conversations, meetings with Ben and Sue, who I think will attest to at least the professionalism and good faith of our ongoing attempts to find compromised positions. And I understand that their primary planning concern is about the side yard setback more than any other. There's a lot of factual errors in their submission. They misunderstand where egress pass would be. They miscalculate the location of the zero setback wall while trespassing. They mistake the shadowing impacts of the garden suite. And in a particularly rich moment, these owners of a three-unit apartment building ask whether their neighbor, my client, should be allowed to have a three-unit building, which is permitted as a right. But the meat of their concern is the side yard setback and its impacts. Yeah? And I empathize. They run this profitable apartment building for decades with what looks like minimal reinvestment. And their tenants will be unhappy about the noise and disruption of construction and the resulting reduction in light and view. There's no apartment that loses its light entirely. These are kitchen and bathroom windows. But the impact is real, and they're going to hear about it. Please remember, though, that the size of our building, the height of that wall, the depth of that wall, those are compliant. While there are 16 variances, many of them are repeating the exact same built form from a slightly different perspective and are supportive of planning staff. A compliant side yard setback here would give them 30 additional inches of side yard setback. But like from a shadowing and a horizon blocking perspective, that's negligible. A compliant wall would give them no additional sunlight and no additional view. Their complaint would have more credibility if their wall was 1.2 meters away also, but that doesn't reflect the built form of the neighborhood. That south wall, which they say nine inches, and my 2024 stamp survey says four and a half at the front, narrowing to two inches at the rear. But in other cases, that south wall, that's a condition that's never been permitted in any zoning bylaw ever for a triplex or apartment building, nor by any Ontario Building Code, if there's unprotected openings, as there are here, since the code was introduced in 1975. I understand this building's older than that, but at some point in the past 49 years, they must have needed a building permit for something. And the fact that that south wall has been standing there illegally for a long time does not impose a responsibility on our site to avoid causing any impact. The negative impacts on 536 Harvey do not result from the variances we're seeking, but are entirely resultant from the illegality of their wall. Regarding the garden suite impacts, and I've met repeatedly with 530 or corresponded with 532, and I think I could speak to his concerns. Our neighbor to the west in northwest and southwest is Prospect Cemetery, a sunken and protected green space for hundreds of meters in every direction. There are no negative impacts on that neighbor from an above-average size ADU. And the zero setback at the rear lot is a consistent feature around the perimeter of the cemetery. Our neighbor to the north is their asphalt parking lot, held up by a four-foot-high retaining wall on the property line, which would of course be forbidden by ravine natural features today, who do not oppose the garden suite. While there would be shadows cast on their parking lot, I don't consider that a negative impact. The neighbor to the south will notice the change. But he also has structures at the rear of his property, they're on the survey, constructed to zero setback on our shared lot line and to the rear lot line. There's no shadowing impacts on his property because he's to the south of us. And with the mature tree canopy maintained, I think that fears of overlook are grossly overstated. The remaining concerns raised by the neighbors pretty cleanly fit into categories of things the committee cannot consider. Aspects of the proposal that do not require variances, issues of property maintenance, engineering, and construction-related concerns. I've spent a lot of time with these people. I like them. I'll shovel their sidewalks this winter, but I don't think they have a single reasonable objection to the variances we're seeking. We've also heard some real bald- Do you want, I'll leave 30 seconds to get on to the next.
Yeah, we do have questions.
I'm struggling with the forestry stuff, frankly. What we have in front of us is an October 10th email, which is requesting that we are recommending that we deny several variances with respect to the garden suite. And it doesn't sound like you're changing the footprint of the garden suite. You're just doing the height.
So with respect to that, we had initially submitted and resubmitted with highlighted sections, an arborist's report demonstrating that we're already contemplating all of the measures that they've- So really what they don't want is, they're okay with a garden suite there. They don't want bulk excavation there.
You'll forgive me for interrupting, but the challenge we have is, I don't have a report, subsequent report from forestry or RNFP, which reflects that. All I've got, all we have in front of us is a report that says deny these variances.
Oh.
I think-
Can I interject? Actually, we do have something in the supplemental.
Yeah, but that's forestry and that's with respect to the front yard.
And also, it's very, yes, that's true.
So we also then have a report from forestry dated today with respect to the front yard variance.
Let's deal with the garden suite first and then also deal with that, if that's okay. Because I think there is a legitimate response to the garden suite one. Their concern is about damaging roots excavation, and they recommend using air spades and other technologies for excavation. Our arborist's report, which was submitted and then resent to them with highlighted sections on pages 15 through 17, talks about a combination of air spades, hydrovacuuming, helical piles, and grade beams to ensure, under an arborist's supervision, that the garden suite can be reliant on subgrade structures that wouldn't damage the mature tree canopy. Like, this is really a construction logistics question here. And I would encourage you to grant the variances, but of course make it subject to forestry approval. Our engineers and their engineers will have to agree that the construction methodology is appropriate prior to permit issuance. But I don't think that forbids, from a planning point of view, that the variances-
What I have in front of me is an arborist's report dated October 1st. Is there a subsequent arborist's? arborist's report?
Cohen master? No, I don't think so.
There's so... I guess what I'm struggling with, sir, is that you've got an arborist's report dated October 1st. I've got a report from forestry October 10th.
I know.
It implies that it's subsequent to receiving the arborist's report.
I'm gently suggesting that perhaps the arborist's report wasn't reviewed by forestry prior to the issuance of their own report. And that's why I've subsequently resent the October 1st report with the... It's a big report with some sections highlighted that explore construction methodologies that address the concerns that they raised. I want to emphasize that I will only be able to construct this building with the consent and support of forestry, but I also want to emphasize that the technology exists to do that.
Yeah, we... I think we heard that. We understand that, but we seem to struggle with the... There's a subsequent report, so...
On the front yard? I could talk about that also. I just want to make sure we've kind of put a bow around the subgrade garden suite issue.
So the only trees that urban forestry is concerned with for the garden suite, are they the three Manitoba maples? Is that correct?
I'm not so good with the tree names, but they're the two boundary trees, yeah.
Okay. And would you be willing to consider a condition that we tie you to implementing the construction means indicated in your arborist's report?
Yes and more. Like, I...
Sorry, I have to intercept. Because we have that similar experience before, we were discouraged from imposing a third-party recommendation because it's the enforcement, it's not possible from the city to enforce someone else's recommendation. So, sorry, I just want to intercept that.
No, I appreciate that.
Through you, Madam Chair. It would have to be the satisfaction of urban forestry. So urban forestry would have to review the arborist's report, perhaps maybe get it peer reviewed, and then make recommendations.
Yes, because we...
Condition I'm thrilled to accept, like I'm thrilled like dentals, but would happily accept.
The reason is that you sort of limit the forestry department's authority to say yes or no. So we retire from a third-party recommendation. But I do have question about the front yard.
Okay. So urban forestry's second report, which I think supersedes their first one, and by the way, love those guys and God appreciate the only thought of this today and not last time they reviewed the file, they want the front yard tree protected, and then they want the landscape open area variance denied.
Yes. And my question is related, but not on that. Yeah, we have this report just dated today. But is that your proposed parking pad or parking space, you realize is beyond your property line, most of it?
Yes.
So have you talked to transportation? Do you have...
I have. They gave me basically the least satisfactory answer you could imagine, which is, we understand it's a prevailing condition around the entire neighborhood, but if it's noncompliant, then that's a bylaw issue and not a transportation issue.
But it's also our... I think it will affect our approval. We cannot approve something that is beyond your property.
I would like to have hardscaping, and if we want to not call it a parking space, I'm obviously fine with that. I understand that that's a little bit of a punt, but I do think to the urban forestry issue that, again, it's going to be a condition of issuance that they're satisfied. We'd like to try and convince them of the merits of injuring that tree, and if we can't, our only option will be to protect that tree. I still think it's very possible to redesign the front yard in a way that accommodates one or two parking spots, some amount of garbage storage, access pathways, and requires variance four. It's just, and I go over this at length in the bigger document that I submitted, it is such a prevalent condition on every single house in this entire community. There is not on-street parking permitted. There's a little bit of drama about this. We're right around the corner from a dead end. It's not like a high-traffic zone. But the only place for vehicle storage on the property is on the front yard. I recognize that we're a few short blocks from a brand-new Aglington Crosstown station, and we're not asking for parking for everyone, but one or two, we'd like two parking, and that's a transportation issue, not a planning issue. We'd like...
No, no, that's not my question. My question is that I realize that it's beyond your property line, and we have difficulty approving something that is beyond your property line. I just want to know whether you have in communication with transportation, whether you receive any comment on that issue only.
Comment from transportation is that, and it's, I think, on the file, and if not, I have emails and can send them to Sabrina in 10 minutes. The comment from transportation is that they're absolutely okay with retaining the one existing parking spot and do not want to approve a second one, and planning was involved in that correspondence, and was clear that they were still supportive of the front yard landscaping variance, understanding that we will still require permission from transportation to have a second parking spot.
But do we...
I know this is...
Do we have that communication from transportation approving one parking spot?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm going to have to check the file.
Yeah, can you just wait?
Yeah.
You can ask further questions while I do so?
I think at some point you're going to ask me about green roofs and if you're okay with imposing a condition, and I'd like to respond to that.
That's not the question I had, but... So can I go back to the garden suite? So I missed when you did your overview of the changes to the variances, what your height request is for the garden suite now? Is it... Which variance is it? Is variance...
The variance for the garden suite height is...
Oh, there. So it's variance 12. So I assume you've amended that, but I didn't catch what you've amended to.
We've amended it to 7.4 meters. And one of the key points I wanted to indicate was that because of the way grade is calculated, the ground floor of this garden suite, which you think of as being zero in a flat entry, is already 0.61 meters high, because it's measured off the average between the grade at the front and rear of the building. And that's why we're not able to be compliant there. I was trying to show that a compliant garden suite here could not have a second story with eight foot of headroom and appropriate structure and insulation. It's just a weird idiosyncrasy. It's an extremely sloped site. Sometimes it works in your favor. Sometimes it works against you.
So in effect, if it's averaging out, then your height's probably even more at the rear lot line, but there's a cemetery in behind.
Right. And at the front, it's... I don't want to shoot from the hip here, but 0.6, 7.4, 6.8. So at the front, it's like six... Shooting from the hip, 6.8 meters tall, where it is facing towards our building. And at the rear, it's probably, assuming that it's a perfectly flat soap, like eight meters tall, which gives you a height in between those two numbers of 7.4 meters.
Through you, Madam Chair. I checked the file. I don't see any comments from transportation, other than the zoning review, which outlines a front yard parking pad license is required from transportation services.
Understood.
It just only mentioned one way. It's still required, but he mentioned two. I see. Okay, thank you. That actually clarified some of my...
Green roof? No?
Thank you. Any more questions to the applicant? Okay, so we are in committee now. I almost think there is to be a defer.
I'm... I'll start. I will admit, I appreciate the applicant's attempts to clarify for the panel things which appear to be unclear. But I don't think I'm any clearer on some of those answers. I am concerned that forestry may have some concerns that are outstanding. I haven't seen a clearing email from forestry saying they're okay. There is an outstanding issue from forestry with respect to the front yard. I appreciate that may be a prevailing condition in the neighborhood, but that doesn't... That's irrelevant in the context of this property. And the transportation stuff, I... It just feels like there's...
Yes.
The applicant is asking us to trust him, and he's probably a very trustworthy guy, but I personally don't feel as a panel member that I have complete information upon which I can make a decision.
I have exactly the same feeling. It's not that... I do not see the overall proposal as anything that stands out. It's only... I think that, given that the existing front yard is only allow one parking spot now, and suddenly it's two, when you think about it, it's two, it will widen the whole pave area in the front, right? And also, to me, it is a notable change, and it should get some kind of clearance from transportation, that two parking spots versus one that they have... He said that they have mentioned. So I always think that we need more information to support that argument, that two parking spots is okay. What do you think? Yes?
Thank you, Chair. Most interesting communications from Mr. Clay and the applicant. And I agree with you. There's seven variances that forestry says deny.
Yes.
Out of 40, 20 percent. And my concerns were three that aren't even part of that list. So I have a concern about the variance number two, the north side yard setback to zero. Now, whatever the neighbor's property is at, that's part of the historical setting that you find. This is a new construction. Is there any reason why you can't comply? It's a brand-new construction. So that's one concern I have. Variance number three is asking for 32.89 percent front yard. But variance number four, because it's looking... Sorry, I think it's variance number four, or, sorry, I beg your pardon, I think it's five, looking at rear yard soft landscaping from 50 percent down to 25. Again, this is a new construction, but with the proposed ancillary building plus the new building, this is a huge ask. So I don't think I can support this particular application as it's presented.
All right. So any other comment?
I mean, I have... I fall into the other category. I have trouble maybe with the front yard and the parking, but I would find the rest of this application approvable. I think, you know, I'm not an arborist, but if you read the arborist's report and the RFNP, and then forestry had a chance to come back and comment on those rear trees again. Manitoba maples are very, like, poor trees. I had one on my property that came down in a windstorm, so I learned a lot about them. These ones are in bad shape. I was surprised to see the report saying that they should be kept. I think it's just because of their size. They only live for 60 years at a maximum. But again, I'm not an arborist, and so we only have the information we have in front of us. But I took the fact that forest, urban forestry, came back and only had a concern with the front tree to sort of mean that they were not concerned about those rear garden suite trees. And then aside from that, I find the application fairly supportable because, you know, we're looking at a triplex in a garden suite in a neighborhood that's full of triplexes. I, you know, do find that the concerns of the neighbors didn't have to do with putting a triplex in a location where those that have spoken to us themselves are landlords of triplexes. So, you know, if... It really only is that front landscaping variance that I have some trouble with, and for landscaping reasons as well as the tree. You know, urban forestry says if we remove this, there's going to be no space for planting at the front, and I think that's valid, and we don't have the transportation correspondence. But I mean, I would be willing to put forward a motion to support it, all except that one variance, but it doesn't look like the committee is going in that direction.
I would support that motion.
I do have a lot of trouble for the front yard. Not because it seems to be against all we have tried to promote, because it's a drastic change. At the moment, it's one driveway length, and then I think with a triplex, you can have one car provided, then they look after the other kind of parking requirement. And that is to reduce the front yard landscaping, is that produce so much asphalt paving in the front. I had difficulty with the front yard landscaping.
Sabrina, can I ask a question? We've got a report from RNFP for the rear yard and forestry from the front yard. They're different people, aren't they? Are they the same people?
They're different.
They're different people. So to your point, if forestry, forestry may not have reflected on whether they're okay with the rear yard. They were just concerned about the front yard. And because it's on a ravine backing onto a cemetery, it's different people who have raised the concern with respect to the trees in the rear yard. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood the difference.
No, that makes sense, and I appreciate the clarification as well. But urban forestry would also consider those rear trees, right? Yeah, so we have two different departments with different views.
The only thing I'd say is, to my point, is that it makes it just fuzzy to me.
Yeah.
And I wonder, I appreciate, and maybe it's a supportable application, but I wonder for the sake of clarity, is it worthwhile deferring and having them come back with a more robust application which answers some of the questions which clearly we have?
And also, maybe also provide some comments from transportation, whether they're supporting one parking space or whether you have for your proposed two parking spaces. Some kind of comment from them will be helpful.
It may well be that they come back and say, yeah, they are Manitoba maples, and maybe the construction technique that is being proposed is actually quite fine. But I don't have that in front of me. So I'm just taking your word for it, Phil.
No, no, no. I hear you. I hear you. I err against, you know, deferring just, you know, when it's not at the applicant's incentive, because I feel like, you know, they're here, but...
Or our benefit in terms of more complete information. But why don't you try to put a motion, see how it goes, and then we can go from there?
Sure. I'll put forward a motion to approve it, subject to... Well, to approve variances one to three and five through 17, and to deny variance four, and to make it subject to... Was there a forestry condition that was recommended in the alternative? I believe there was.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, there is urban forestry number two.
Okay, subject to urban forestry number two.
And it would be as amended, right?
Yes.
Because they've removed variance number 13.
Okay, as amended.
All right. Do we have a second to that?
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. Like, ravine and natural feature also included a condition, number two, which is similar to urban forestry's.
Sorry, that's what I thought, yeah.
And then transportation services for the front yard parking.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah. I'll include that condition, although it might not be relevant since variance number four is eliminated, but I'll still include the condition because better safe than, sorry.
Yeah, number four is we got because of the parking space, that's what they have reduced landscaping, but it... have reduced landscaping, but it doesn't mean that, the matter of mention about the number of parkings, yeah. So everyone hear the motion? Anyone want to second that motion? Okay. Anyone, all in favor? Two to three is denied. So we are waiting for a second motion?
So I'll move a motion to defer this application, primarily for the reasons we've talked a little bit about. I think in general, it's not a bad proposal, but I think there's too many, for me anyways, outstanding uncertainties with respect to the status of both forestry and transportation to be able to make a clear decision on this one.
Okay. Anyone second to that motion?
I'd like you just to make a comment as well, and second.
Yeah, okay.
But I think hopefully, the applicant has, of course, heard all the discussion, has been part of it, that once the application comes back, it takes into consideration all the comments, so that it's a much cleaner, cleaner application, and I would second.
You would second that? Yeah, and Clay, and then second. And all in favor of the deferral? Three, two, and Philip, and, right, dissent. Okay. I defer for that reasons, and then you can go and get, working, go to urban forestry and also transportation and get their comments. Thank you. Okay. The decision is made.
Urban forestry and transportation.
Yes, yes.
To, I swear there are questions. Are any of my variances granted at this point, or will I be required anew to argue?
No, you come back. We will hear it again. The application is deferred.
And I come back generally to, we'll talk about that.
Yes, yes.
But I would add, as we've clarified, the ravine and natural features protection folks at urban forestry are different than the urban forestry proper, and we would like clarification from both.
It's a complicated file, and the five, I'll talk to you.
Okay, yeah.
So if it's complicated, you can appreciate how it puts, the position it puts us in when it's this complicated.
Absolutely. But given a deferral, I'd love to talk to you again instead of five parking spaces.
Yes. Thank you very much. And then we come to item number 25, is 36 Russell Hill Road. This is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with integral garage, and also a waste ground for terrace and a rear first-floor balcony, and also to convert the existing one-story osserial building, which is a detached garage, into a two-story osserial building, which is going to be a lounge and our studio by constructing a one-story north addition and a partial second-floor addition. We received survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and revised site plan, and revised zoning notice, and also corresponding from agent and Arbus report, and also presentation material from the agent. We received comment from natural, urban forestry, and we have received one support from 315 Russell Hill Road and opposition 301 Longstel Road. Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent online. We also, there is one registered speaker.
Yes.
That we're trying to get a hold of. So maybe we'll unmute him and then see if he's there. Brent, you're unmuted. Hello, Brent? Okay, so through you, Madam Chair, then, we've made multiple attempts to-
Even the agent, we cannot con-
No, no, we do have the agent. We just, we were having trouble reaching the speaker, and so we're unable to get them on the line. So then we just need to hear from the agent for this one.
Okay, all right.
But we do have their letter in opposition. Okay, so David Bronskill, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening to the panel. Last name is Bronskill. First initial D for David. Address is 333 Bay Street, Suite 3400 in Toronto. And I'm here this evening appearing as the agent for the applicant.
Thank you. Yes, I'm not too sure, because you do have opposition, but we cannot contact him.
Madam Chair, I speak to that opposition. Sorry to cut you off. That, Brent, who you may be attempting to reach, may be Brent Geddes, G-E-D-D-E-S.
Yes.
And I would simply point the committee, we acknowledge this is late, but this is what sometimes happens with consultation. There's actually a letter that's come in from Brent and Gail Geddes that rescinds their previous opposition, and it's late on your file, I acknowledge that, but indicates no objection. And as part of that, Madam Chair, I will be asking the committee, should it feel that it wants to grant the variances, to tie them to the site plan?
Okay.
That is part of what has been discussed with Brent and Gail Geddes, as part of the new letter that you have in front of you. So I will be asking you for that condition, should you feel that you would authorize the variances that are being requested. So I did want to bring that to your attention at the outset, that that letter of opposition has now been superseded by this letter, which I acknowledge has only come into the committee today.
Okay, thank you. So let me check whether we require a short presentation. Actually, I do myself, can you just maybe very briefly, to explain to me what has been revised, you know, on the revised plan?
So the, as a result of discussions with that neighbor, there aren't revisions to the plan, but it's a commitment that the site plan that's in front of you will be exactly what would be implemented through the variances. Maybe if, yeah, staff can just put up that site plan, that's very helpful, thank you. There are 10 variances, but I would divide them into two categories. Six relate to the structure, the house. Four relate to the accessory structure at the rear. Three of the variances that apply to the accessory structure at the rear, it's currently used today, actually as an accessory structure, as a two-story workshop, so it's existing as two stories, and there's about a 37-square-meter expansion to it. But the height, the number of stories, and the setback to the rear lot line for that accessory structure are all in existing condition. It's a 37-square-meter expansion to the north, so that it will be used both as a workshop and as a lounge associated with the pool. You then have six variances, Madam Chair, associated with the dwelling itself. As we have in often with these packages for you, we've included slides that show you the numbers that are occurring in this neighborhood. I think, as this committee well knows, there's a lot of development activity. The FSI being sawed at 75.15 is frankly on the, I'm going to submit to you the low range of FSIs that are being granted in the area. We've included a slide of numbers for both the length and the depth variances. Again, it's a very common variance in this area. I'll speak to it in a little bit more detail. We also included a slide in this package, which we haven't included before, but is number nine on the PDF that we included, that actually shows just even within this block, very, I apologize to staff, those are the plans. Any chance you have the presentation materials handy that you could pull up for the committee? My apologies. Because it shows it in color. I'm not sure, that's, that looks like it's the one, thank you. Page nine of that, that's the slide, well done. It shows even on this stretch of Russell Hill, similar combinations frankly of length and depth and accessory structures in the rear, just within this block. And so it's a, I'm going to suggest to you, it's frankly quite a common deployment within this neighborhood, and even in this block. The site plan itself, and I apologize if staff could pop back up in the package to either slide two or slide three, it shows you again the, what's a three-story, what's a two-story, and what's a one-story. The length and depth actually apply to some of the below grade, which is why, as I have previously with this committee on other application urged, that you tie it to plans, so that we can't deploy some of the basement above grade. And it would also keep the third floor at a proposed length of 18.8 meters, 18.08 meters, sorry. The second floor is 20.87. And then there is a one-story bumpout to create a first floor length of 26.21 meters on only one side of the dwelling. No landscaping variances before you in terms of soft landscaping or hard landscaping in front or the rear. So it's, I am going to suggest to this committee pretty conventional, especially in this neighborhood. And our client did have extensive discussions with the neighbors, including to the west, including to the north. And as you note, there's now no opposition letters. There are urban forestry conditions, which we obviously accept, no memo from city planning. So overall, we think it does respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the neighborhood, and would have merit for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any question? Oh, yeah, we do have questions.
Thanks, Ed. I was going to ask you about the adjacent neighbors, but you've, it sounds like there have been discussions and there's no concern. I'm going to be, do a little bit of Groundhog Day here with you. The outdoor room?
Yes.
You know what I'm asking, right?
Yes.
So it looks like from the side elevation, that kind of presents like an enclosed room.
I think that's fair. Through you, Madam Chair, to you, Mr. Clay. The south elevation for staff is probably the right one, where you can see it. It's enclosed in that fashion. But then you can see, what you're seeing, what you're actually seeing is openings on that side on the south elevation. And this is where it gets always complicated on these elevations, but I anticipated this question for you. Those windows or doors, I guess is maybe a better way of describing them, that you see, it, they are the glass doors that you see on the one-story bumpout. So the best way to see this probably is page five of the application materials. Mr. Wingle's office, probably in anticipation of your question, included a colored massing of the dwelling at the rear, and you will see how it's open. So we were, we were, we were ready for this question, through you, Madam Chair, to you, Mr. Clay. There. So those, those windows you're seeing are those doors on the one-story?
Okay, so that, yeah.
And so it's open without a, yeah, without a wall on that south side.
That's fair enough. And we've had this discussion a couple times. I'm glad to see that-
We're learning.
I missed it, I didn't realize it, but that actually quite nicely explained, answers the question.
Yes. I do have one question, Mr. Bronskill, about the, that same, same structure, lounge and studio. Is it purposely leave out that, it seems that there's only a stair going up to a studio, you have not proposed any kind of plumbing, or other-
Yeah, Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt you. That's the porch, sorry to interrupt you. That's the porch. The accessory structure, in this image, the accessory structure is kind of where we're standing. It's at the rear, it's an existing garage structure that's been used as a workshop, and it would sit at grade.
Yeah, no, that's, I understand. That's my, my question is that, it seems that there's only a stair going up to the studio, right, from the lounge area. But what I mean is, I don't see any proposed, like, plumbing fixtures and all that. So is it intended to be not a permanent habitable space?
Correct.
And then-
Correct, Madam Chair.
That's-
And sorry again to interrupt you. If staff could go down to page 11, we've got a bit of a graphic to show you the lounge and the addition, and you can see, it's not intended to be permanent habitable space, and you can see where, that's the one there. You can see that's the existing garage, uses the workshop today, and you can see how the blue, it's, the existing height remains the same, there's a slope, and that's the 37-square meters added on at the north side.
Okay. So that, so you propose that it will not be used as a habitable space, otherwise it will become like a garden suite, right?
Correct. It's not proposed as any type of garden suite, and obviously, we don't have a lane here, so we can't propose it as a laneway suite. But you're right, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Byatt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Bronskill. Just a quick question with regard to, bear with me, variance three and four. They both, I think you have already perhaps mentioned it, that they relate to the basement structure that exceeds the house itself, and goes within about five or six feet from where the pool is?
That's, that's correct. The drawings have the basement floor plan. There's an excavated area that extends to the back. It does allow the ramp for the garage to come down and to have some parking at the rear. It's under that terrace area that I had shown you on the rear 3D model plan previously, in answering Mr. Clay's area. So it's that terrace area underneath that has been excavated, that then counts for the length and depth beyond the rear wall of the house.
Thank you.
And sorry, Madam Chair, it's why, again, not to belabor the point, but the condition from the neighbor about, that we've agreed to in terms of building substantially in accordance with the site plan, and my respectful submission to you remains very important, so that that additional length or depth can't be deployed above grade in any way, shape, or form, and extend the structure itself further into the rear yard above grade.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Sir, just the, just the site plan, David, or elevations?
I'm not opposed to elevations as well in the world of boots and suspenders, or belts and suspenders, sorry. I would have no concern if it was both the site plan and the elevations.
Also, since we are on this point, can I suggest also tie to the plans of the osserial building, so that you get, we make sure that's what you're going to do with it? Yeah?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is entirely acceptable and appropriate. I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any more questions? No, we do not have any more questions now we are in committee. Okay. No, go ahead.
Sure, I'll take this one. I think Mr. Bronskill is correct. This is becoming quite a prevalent style in this neighborhood. We've seen it several times before. Seems to be one which is garnering a relative degree of acceptance and popularity. It, there is the extension of the basement below, but I think the treatment above is appropriate, given the nature of the rear yard. The length and depth are tied primarily to that, so I accept that as a rationale. I think the client, or the applicant, has done a really good job of discussing this with the neighbors, and there seems to be acceptance and support for it now. I think these are, again, this neighborhood, these are large lots, typically large homes. This is not inconsistent, I don't think, with the prevailing housing stock in this area. So I personally think it's supportable.
Okay. So if you're going to make a motion, you will have to-
Yeah, we tied to plan. So if no one else has any comments, I'll just move a motion to approve. There is forestry conditions one and two, and the approval would be tied to a condition to tie it to the site plan and elevations for both the main dwelling and the ancillary building. And I don't think there are any other conditions.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay. So the, is the revised site plan, right, that tied to the revised site?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So anyone want, yes, Mr. Bisnet, a second, Clay, and all in favor of all the conditions, approved unanimously with the conditions. Thank you. Okay, numbered, we go to item number 26, 145 Matheson Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition and a third-floor rooftop patio extension, and a new rear yard walkway, and to reduce the size of existing ground floor deck, and also to construct a new osserial building, which is a detached garage. We receive a copy of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, revised site plan, and two photographs, and a cover letter from the agent. We receive comment from committee planning and the staff report from urban forestry, and also we receive corresponding opposition from 147 Matheson Avenue. Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent on line. We also, there is one registered
Through you, Madam Chair, we do have the agent here in person. We also have a registered speaker for 147 McPherson Avenue.
So that is in opposition?
Yes.
Yes, so you do have our opposition, so would you like to tell, get, yeah, tell us your name and address, and you give us a brief presentation for five minutes?
Yes, Madam Speaker. My name is Franco Cololillo. My address is 147 Northland Avenue, New York, and I'm the agent. I'm here with the owner today. So this is an existing semi-detached, three-story, single-family dwelling. The proposal is for a second-floor rear addition. That would be, the side walls and the rear wall would be in line with the existing front floor, first-floor rear addition. And, and this is proposed to create a functional bedroom, a third bedroom for this home. Despite the small size of the addition, the lot size is relatively small and thus results in a, in a high density factor. We'll talk briefly about the, the density issue. I just wanted to note that the original gross floor area of the house is calculated as 0.9 times the area of the lot. Also, I wanted to discuss the fact that in 1984, a building permit was approved, and a rear addition, a one-story addition that we want to build over, lawfully established the, the building depth and increased the density to, to 0.95 times the density of lots. So I'd contested the wording of the variance because it seems to suggest that we're going from 0.6 density to 1.03, but the examiner did not change the variance for that. Additionally, a detached garage is proposed to accommodate a vehicle, of course, and much-needed storage. And the proposed garage meets all setback and height requirements of the bylaw. However, due to the relatively small size of the lot, a functionally proposed garage with a depth of 6.65 meters results in a challenge to meeting the rear soft yard landscaping requirements of the bylaw. So I touched already on the, the issue with regards to density. It appears quite high, but again, I just wanted to reiterate that we're going from 0.95, which is lawfully established by that 1984 permit, to 1.03. Also, another lightly contentious issue was with regards to the previously approved building depth, which, from my understanding of the bylaw, makes the building depth applicable to the building and the entire building, makes it lawfully established. Unfortunately, variance was not written in accordance with that, with that belief. So I just wanted to reiterate that my argument with regards to that variance for a building depth of 18.22 meters is not an increase in the building depth. In this case, it has been measured, of course, to the second floor, and it seems to disregard the existing lawfully established building depth of the first floor. And again, I just wanted to point that out. With regards to the inability to meet the soft landscaping requirement, you know, trying to meet the requirement of a, of a garage, of modest, of modest depth, the, we, we've even reduced the, we're removing, there's currently surface, rear surface parking accessed from the rear lane. And there's also a fence, so the fence will be removed, a new garage is proposed, and then an existing rear deck will be reduced in size and possibly not even constructed. And there currently is, because of the small size of the rear yard, a deck and paving stone. So the issue with the not, in being able to provide enough landscaping is, well, we'd like to put forward that we're actually going to introduce some green soft landscaping. So the deck will be reduced or removed completely, and it will be at the minimum what we have shown on the, on the site plan.
Thank you. Yes. So we hold our?
But I think I just wanted a technical clarification. So if you're reducing the size of the deck, does that increase your soft landscaping?
It can, yes.
Can, well, again, so?
If we introduce the, that area that's been taken away as, as soft landscaping, yes.
It's already been reduced.
Oh, so, so the variance reflects the reduction in the, in the size of the deck?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. So we hear the opposition, and then we will come back, you will come back to answer their concern.
Sure, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair, then. We'll unmute the owner at 147 McPherson Avenue.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Yeah. Tell us your?
Thank you.
Your name?
My name is Mark, my name is Mark Staunton. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother-in-law, who is the owner of the house, Nada Harcourt, and it's 147 McPherson Avenue is the house. We're attached to 145.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell us your concern? Yes, thank you.
Yes. We are objected to all three variants in this proposal. We don't consider the miners, they will drastically impact our adjoining property. We only learned about this proposal when we received a notice from the Committee of Adjustment. The owner at 145 did not live at, on the premises. In relation to the floor space index variance, this house was sold in February 2021, listed as a two-plus-one-bedroom. Since acquiring the property, the owner has conducted renovations, upgrades, and has been renting it. The owner indicates that the existing property is a two-bedroom with a gross floor area of 1,998 square feet. He proposes effectively doubling the floor space index to create a third bedroom. Our house is four bedrooms, two on the second floor and two on the third floor, and we were at 145 many years ago and had the same four-bedroom layout as do many other semis on this street. It seems drastic to create such a disruptive exterior extension rather than creating a third bedroom in the existing interior space. Also, if extra space is required, it seems far less disruptive to extend the third floor into part of the existing deck space without altering the existing building depth. In relation to the building depth variance, the bylaw states permitted maximum building depth for the semi-detached house is 17 meters. The proposed depth of this two-story extension is 18.22 meters. The impact of this addition on our row of houses is best illustrated by the community planning photo on page seven of PLN-CA correspondence from Lori Serden to Mr. Cololillo. Quoting from the community planner, "145 McPherson Avenue is already one of the deepest of those houses, and the proposed rear second-story addition would disrupt the current pattern of rear elevations where increased depths only apply to one-story additions." The application brushes off the impact of their plan because the proposed depth is the same as the existing first-floor kitchen extension from 1984, which he argues was lawfully approved and so should apply to the two-story addition. The first-floor kitchen was not contested by us at the time, was deliberately constructed with a sloped roof so as not to obstruct our light and is in no way interfered with our property. The proposal to create a 21-foot elevation on the same extended footprint would have a drastic impact on this shared space. The second-story extension would create a 21-foot wall that would bloom like a monolith over our back deck, protrude over our property, and block all morning light towards deck and first and second-floor windows overlooking the backyard. Our second-floor window would have its eastern view permanently obstructed, losing light from the east and current view of trees and sky. Such a major construction would likely disrupt our fence that it butts the kitchen extension and the long-established vegetation that provides privacy to our deck and garden space. Community planning also noted that the proposed depth of the third-floor deck extension reaches far beyond the neighboring houses at 143 and 147 and raised privacy and overlook concerns. While this third-floor extension, deck extension plan has been removed, the long platform of the second-story addition would still protrude far beyond the depth of the neighboring houses, and we believe invite future use of the open deck space. In terms of the rear landscaping variance, the bylaw states that with a residential building must have a minimum of 25% soft landscaping. The proposal reduces rear, rear yard soft landscaping area to 13% from the required 25%. Reducing the soft landscaping by almost half and engulfing the garden space with two large structures will have a negative impact on our light space and enjoyment of our property. The mock-up photo of this plan, which we submitted, shows that this, how this proposal would overwhelm the outdoor space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, thank you. So, yeah, you heard their opposition, can you address their concern? Yeah?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I mean, I'm happy to address the zoning issues. You know, I, I will attest also to the fact that the drawing plans do reflect what is on the site. I know it's not a zoning issue, but it is not a four-bedroom house. It's just speculation on this individual. His main issue appears to be with regards to shadow, and, I mean, it's specifically morning shadow. I, you know, he will be affected. It is an increase. He mentions in his letter, he calls it a two-story addition. It's not a two-story addition. I think the impact, because it's not a formally-done shadow study, the impact will be minimal, and it is only in the mornings, so there's only so much credibility that we can, I think, honestly give to the mock-up, which I, I thought the mock-ups were excellent, but again, mock-ups are not to scale. So yes, we acknowledge that there, there will be an impact. However, the adjacent property, for example, to the east of us, there's quite an extensive tree canopy already. And so, you know, it doesn't necessarily affect his property, but the properties are quite narrow. There is a, a robust tree canopy and, in these yards, and, I mean, I, you know, if, if we were to plant trees, we could, you know, there'd be shadow there, but it seems to be that shadow from a tree is acceptable, but it doesn't, never seems to be acceptable from a two-story addition. So, you know, again, it, light seems to be an issue. We, with, with, well, speaking with the planner, Lori, we did push back the third-floor existing roof deck. It's in line with their third-floor roof deck, so I don't believe that the, this addition will, will, will affect privacy in any way, any more than it does right now. Again, only shadow and affected only in the, in the morning, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I don't know the, the specific relevance to the, you know, zoning pertinent points with regards to other mentions in his letter. The owner has not, they, they were correct in that I had incorrectly listed the date of ownership by the current owner, and the current owner does not currently live there, but does plan to live there. I mean, obviously, an addition, a project like this does not happen with tenants. The plan is for the owner to do this addition and to move in. And so there is a long-term, there's long-term goals by, by this owner, and there was a suggestion in the letter that this is not the plan. I'd like to verify that, so.
Thank you.
Hopefully that addresses the.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So do we have question to? Yeah, please, go ahead, Mr. Byatt.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of quick ones. The, the soft landscaping issue, the 13%, if I heard correctly, maybe I'm wrong, was what would be available after the deck is gone?
Yes.
So that's the commitment. Okay. The other one was with regard to the third-floor deck. Is any of that being changed, or it's existed, that's going to remain?
That's going to remain, yeah.
Remain.
It will remain unchanged.
Unchanged, all right. I, I think that was all I had. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? No? So we are in committee now, that's right. So, okay, Mr. Gos, he stands up.
So I, I do think that the mock-up that the neighbor did is, actually is pretty well-done and, and pretty helpful. It, it does show that there will be, you know, an, an impact, but you have to consider whether that impact is going to be a minor impact, and I think it is. This is a very small house on a very tight lot. I think that's true for all of the houses in this vicinity and this, this nature. I think wanting to make your small house on a tight lot into a three-bedroom house is a reasonable development of the site, so personally I find it, yeah, provable.
I, I agree that the shadows will probably occur early in the morning, but only because I think the yards are south-facing orientation, and then most of the day probably will not get affected. Yeah. And also, I'd like to mention that, that's why the contest is important. The bylaws are written as they are, but then you get, you have given us the contest that the, the two, two out of the three variances are existing, that you just, the length and also the FSI is already quite high, you, you are adding the, a little bit more. Yeah, that's, that's a good context to, to consider. Yeah, all right.
And so on, on that basis, I'll move to approve the application, subject to forestry condition number two.
Yeah, Mr. Byatt, second?
Thank you.
And all in favor with conditions? Unanimously approved. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So now we are on 20th, 28, with 42 Walberts Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached by constructing a front one-story addition, a porch enclosure. And we receive a survey, site plan, floor plan elevations, two photographs, and presentation material from agent. We also receive comment from Metro Links and a support letter from 38, 40, 44, 46 Walbert Street.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
Yes. Okay.
So at this time, we'll unmute Leo Mastandrea.
Hello, my name is Leo Mastandrea. I'm the agent for the owners at 42 McRoberts, and we did canvass the neighbors, and we have support from the adjacent. I believe it's straightforward and consistent with what's happening on the street, and it does meet four tests.
Yes. Have you given us your address for the record? I, I know you've given us your name, but?
One.
Hello?
We've also submitted some photos, was showing the covered porches on McRoberts. Closed porches, I believe. There's quite a few.
No, I, sorry, I, my question is, can you give us your address for our record?
817 Cosburn Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Because we do not have, you do not have any opposition, and then do we require?
Just a porch enclosure.
Yeah, exactly. So we do not require a presentation from you, and as we see, you have support from the neighbors, and we are ready to move this into discussion. Do you have anything you want to, specifically you want to address the panel?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, in committee now. Okay, Mr. Byatt says?
Thank you, Chair. I think this is a very straightforward application from Mr. Mastandrea. I don't think there are any issues at all. So I'd like to move a motion to approve this application.
A second, Mr. Gos, second, and all in favor with no condition, unanimously approved. Thank you. It's approved. Now, we move to number, item number 29 is 153 Goulart Avenue. This is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached by constructing a new rear one-story addition, and the existing one-story addition will be demolished. We receive a survey, site plan, floor plan, and elevations, revised site plan, floor plan, and elevations. And we have a red-line public notice and cover letter from the agent, and we have received corresponding and also a report submitted by the agent, and we have received comments from community planning and also urban forestry. And we have received comments from community planning and also urban forestry.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll unmute the agent.
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, committee chair and council members. My name is Carol Nguyen. I'm the authorized agent speaking on behalf of the owners at 153 Gilard. My address is 321 Carlo Avenue, Unit 203.
Yes. You do not have any opposition, but you do have a revision. Can you, can you go through the revision with us, so that we can call it accurately?
Yes. So the revision is to variance number two. We're increasing the proposed soft landscaping to 4.98%,
Okay.
which is 4.96 meters squared, as per the red line drawing.
Okay. And then that, that's it? That's the only revision?
Yes, that's the only revision. It was just...
You have mentioned two. That's why I asked again. Okay.
Oh, sorry. It was variance number two.
Okay, thank you. That clears up. And as a staff report, they urge us to impose, if we're going to approve, they have one condition.
Yes.
Yes, you were aware of that.
Yep, we're aware.
So I, do we need a, we do not have, need a presentation? Do we have questions?
No, I'm happy to forward a motion.
Yes, we are in committee. Yeah, please, go ahead.
To approve with the planning recommendation, number one.
Yes, and also a forestry condition, too.
Forestry condition included.
Yeah, I think this is... Amended.
As amended agenda, yes. All right. So, Mr. Goss, second. All in favor with the amended? Okay, all in favor, unanimously. Thank you. Wow, we seem to be picking up speed. Okay. Item 30, 141 Wasbrough Street East, to, this is to alter existing three-story townhouse by constructing a rear grand foredeck with stairs, and a rear second-story addition with a balcony, and also a rear first-story addition with a Juliet balcony. We receive survey site plan, floor plan elevations, four photographs, and cover letter from the agent, and also a rendering of the property, of proposal. We receive comments from Heritage and also community planning. We receive support from 143 Wasbrough Street East, and with letter of concern from 145 Wasbrough, and also opposition from 100 Wasbrough.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online, as well as one registered speaker in opposition.
Okay.
Peter Giordano, you've been unmuted.
Hi, Madam Chair. Committee members, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, yes.
Terrific. Peter Giordano, David Small Designs, 1405 Cornwall Road in Oakville, and we're acting as the agent and designers representing the application.
Thank you. And you do have one opposition. Can you give us a five-minute presentation?
Yes, absolutely. Can I ask the moderator to put up my presentation that I submitted? That's online.
Just take a moment, yes.
It's not the digital rendering. I submitted a PowerPoint with 12 slides. I promise I won't reference every slide, just to be efficient here.
Yes. Are this not the one, right? You, okay.
No, that's correct. This was submitted as part of the application, but I submitted before the deadline, I submitted a formal presentation. But I can start into it.
No, it's fine, it's fine. Just give us a minute, maybe we can bring it up.
Perfect, thank you.
Wait, two... Is it in the supplemental?
When was this submitted?
It was submitted Thursday of last week, and it was received and confirmed as received, and then it was posted on the, on the application website.
Okay. Okay, through you, Madam Chair. Just give us a minute. We're just going to extract it from the file.
Okay. There you go.
There you go. Perfect.
I got fame for this staff. Brilliant move.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
And can you advance that to slide number two, please? Right there, thank you. So, Madam Chair, we're here representing the applicant. We're requesting your consideration on four variance items. The subject property is an existing three-story, single-family residential end unit as part of a four-unit townhouse block. It has a heritage designation that limits the amount of front elevation and exterior changes permitted. The proposed renovation retains the three-story, single-family residential classification with all of the exterior work located at the back portion of the dwelling. You'll find correspondence from Heritage Planning with no concerns or comments based on our submission to their department. I would like to mention that this file was originally posted online with neighborhood notification letters describing our application with a description that was completely incorrect. They referred to the project as a two-story detached dwelling with multiple units and a front basement walk-up. As you can imagine, that caused a firestorm of concern from neighbors with reference to this, and some reference to that in their letters of concern. We clarified that along the way, and then we met with the planner, who was also confused by that description. We walked him through it, described to him that it was incorrect, and he took our descriptions, and in a conversation meeting with him, he concluded that planning had no concerns with our application. We notified the application technician immediately. They revised the public notice and recirculated it to the neighbors on time before the required date, and they posted it on the Application Information Center page correcting this. Slide three, if you can go to slide three, please, of my presentation. It details in, it details the rationale and justification to our variance items. I can explain these more in more detail if required, and if you just go straight to slide four, please. The site plan on the slide shows in graphic format the variance items. You'll notice that items number two and three, building length and depth, are existing conditions that we're maintaining, and we have not made worse in this renovation. Slide five, please. Slide five explains variance item number four, the FSI. The subject property is an end-unit townhouse, and as such, the lot is very small in relation to the building footprint. The width of the property is only 7.92 meters width, wide, sorry, with a mutual shared driveway. The larger percentage RFI is common with townhouse properties. The planner for application agreed this variance was appropriate for the same reason. The existing as-built FSI for this house and this property is 0.92. I would also like to point out that the third floor, constructed within the sloping roof structure, results in space with limited headroom for a large percentage of the layout, and you can see this on slide number 11. I don't necessarily require you to go there, but that's just a description for that. We're removing and rebuilding the last 12 feet of the rear of the house, and then extending the third floor while retaining the terrace, stepping back the rear, and stepping back from the rear and the sides. Since the third floor is currently built within the slope, sloping roofs, there's a large portion that creates headroom issues, so it nullifies and reduces some of the use. Our clients had conversations with many of their immediate neighbors, most of which expressed support and had no concerns with the application. On file, you'll find a letter of support from our neighbor, Park Sharing the Party Wall at 143. You'll also find on file one letter of concern and one letter stating a few items of concern, but overall, they supported our application. The concerns stated are more related to construction and parking than the proposed description of our property. And then the planning department requested conditions to tie the drawings to the approved concern, noted note for neighbor at 145. A letter commenting denial from the neighbor across the road at 100, I believe they were a little confused by the original description of our proposal, as their comments do not accurately reflect our proposal. With that said, we believe our application to be appropriate, represent good planning, fitting with the character and fabric of the neighborhood. We hope that you agree. At this time, I'm prepared to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. I think we will hold our question to you, and we'll listen to the opposition first. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. We will now hear from Laura Dean.
Yes.
Lori, you've been unmuted.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair. I am here on behalf of Lori Barrett and Martin Block, who are the owners of 145 Roxborough Street East, as mentioned by the agent for the applicant. We had submitted a letter of concern, let's put it, outlining a few items that we do hope are addressed by the committee. Number one was already addressed by the agent, and it had to do with the notice and the error in the notice, so I think that's been adequately addressed, and it's now understood that the previous description was, in fact, just wrong. There won't be a front basement entrance, there won't be a second unit, and there will not be, I think it said, a front porch. So that's taken care of. I think we can put that to the side. The second item had to do with the conditions of approval that were proposed in the staff report dated October 15th. Our clients were comforted to see those conditions that required a, that the proposal be constructed substantially in accordance with the drawings that had been provided. But what I did want to note was that there was no reference to drawing A6, which is the front elevation.
A6.
And as the agent mentioned, this property is in the South Rosedale HCD, and the HCD study places a very strong emphasis on the preservation of building facades. I note that the plans do not appear to indicate that there will be any alterations to the front of the building. That was my reading of them anyway, and I don't see that there are any variances that would alter the appearance of the front of the building. But I, what I am asking for on behalf of my clients is that the condition in the staff report be modified to also include reference to drawing A6, which is the front elevation. That would ensure that the project is constructed substantially in accordance with that drawing as well.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. And you finished? Any question to this speaker? No, thank you. So let's go back to the agent.
I thank the representative for our neighbor at 145 for attending. Yes, in keeping with what their, what their concerns were, we respect the fact that this is a heritage home. We're not making adjustments. There's one minor change that we're making to the front that Heritage is aware of, and that's a basement window that's getting wider by about a foot and a half, so that we could get egress from a bedroom on that lower floor. Single family, so it's part of a guest room at the front. In order to provide egress, there's no other way to get egress from that front room than to widen the window at the basement level by a foot and a half. Everything else, all the other dormers and wonderful architectural elements, including the entry and the roof and everything else, is remaining the same. As mentioned before, we're not making the building longer. It's remaining the same length. We're simply, we're extending the second floor to match and align with the first floor, and then we're extending the third floor with setback on the side, so it's still appearing to be built within the roof structure of the building. Yeah, so I believe we're maintaining the character of the building, and we certainly wouldn't want to do anything to impact that.
So my question, yeah, is to tie to the front elevation. You, because it's a designated property, so do you need to have a heritage review? Are you subject to a heritage review anyway?
Yeah, absolutely. We submitted the drawings just as they were with the revised enlarged basement, basement window at the lower level, and we noted to them that that was the extent of changes that were happening to the front of the building, and everything else was effectively remaining the same.
Also, so they have, they have reviewed the little change of the window, right? Okay.
That is correct.
Yes. All right. Any question, any more question?
Yeah, so just to clarify, then, the answer is you wouldn't have a concern to it being tied to that elevation as well?
Absolutely not. I wouldn't have problems with it being tied to any of the elevations.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So any more questions? Either way, we have, do we have a motion? Mr. Byatt, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is the most interesting application in the sense that the front facade has essentially been maintained intact. It's very difficult to see the changes that will occur at the back. I don't have any concerns with this application. Heritage has no concerns. There's the planning condition, which ties the application to drawings A7, A8, and A9, so they're received on September the 5th, and we can additionally tie it to front elevation drawing A6. So with those conditions in place, I'd like to move motion to approve.
Yeah, and what, yeah, Mr. Business, second, and all in favor with that condition, those conditions, unanimously approved with the condition. Thank you. It's approved, thank you. Now, we have item number 31, is 43 Boston Avenue. This is to alter existing two-story rowhouse by constructing a new front basement walkout with stairs, and to accommodate a second story suite in the basement, also to construct a rear deck, one-level deck, and also two, there will be two drowning on this lot. We receive a survey site plan, floor plan elevations, and two photographs of the property.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item. At this time, we'll unmute Leo Mastrandrea.
Hello.
My name is Leo Mastrandrea, from 817 Cosburn Avenue. I'm the agent for the owners at 43 Boston.
Yes. It seems that it's quite a straightforward application, and you do not have any opposition. Do we have questions, or do we want a presentation? We have...
I'll just, it's just the easiest variance, I think, I've ever seen.
Just a quick question, if I may, before I move motion. Just looking at the front walkway in your site plan, it says, it's just identifying it as a walkway. it as a walkway. Would the walkway be permeable? Are you using interlocking brick that would allow moisture to pour through? Mr. Maschindaria?
If you want to make it a condition on approval, we could make it permeable.
Thank you. Thank you, that would be great.
Yeah, permeable, okay. Any other questions? And, yeah, please, go ahead.
So I just wanted to put forward a motion to approve.
With that, do you want to include that?
I do, yes.
Condition? Okay. With the permeable for the front walkway? Anyone want to, yeah, Mr. Go, second, all in favor of that condition? Okay, enamis, they approve, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're on our last item.
Just before we move to it, if we have speakers registered, maybe we can just take a very short break before this last item?
Oh, we do have.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have a number of speakers.
Oh, so let's have a few minutes break. Let's go to, yeah.
Eight, eight speakers for this one.
Eight?
Yes.
Yeah, 20 minutes?
No, let's, five minutes?
I played with the clock and I put it at 9:30. That actually might not be far off.
I was trying to tie the morning session. I thought it was, I said 4:00.
Yeah, you did, that's right. You told her what, you're right. I think I jinxed it.
Yeah, this is real. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah, this is real. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. I just drove. I'm letting you guys work on these things over till 9:10.
Yeah. It is.
One little more closer to the real time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think that, I said it, that's probably what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Did you have to reschedule your plans?
I just, I don't know if I'm going to make it.
You're not going to be very big company. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. The guys are a bunch of Irish Republicans anyway, so too rowdy for me.
Oh, yes. Yes. Thank you. No, I'm just getting tired now. We're not, oh, okay. Are we ready to resume? Okay. Yeah, we're looking forward to this so much because it's our last item. Okay, item number 32 is 3194 and 3206 Dundas Street West. This is to alter the development standard for eight-story mixed-use building under the site specific zoning bylaw by increasing the height and number of stories, gross floor area, and also minimum setbacks, and also adding residential units to the first floor, and to reduce the number of residents and visitor parking spaces, as well as to reduce the vertical clearance of one parking space. We also receive a survey site plan for plans and elevations, redlined with wise diagram three, and cover letter from the agent and Arbus report and digital rendering of the proposal, parking requirement letter, shadow study, presentation material, and the site plan, site-specific zoning bylaws, sorry. And we receive comment from Heritage and Urban Forest, Heritage and also Metro, Transportation Engineering, and also Metaling. We receive from also community planning. We receive one support from 123 Maria Street. We receive, I will not read all the opposition, it seemed to have longer than one page, about one page and a half of positions. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. We do have the agent here in person, and like I stated before, we have about eight registered speakers.
Yes.
So we'll hear from the agent first.
Yeah, please, yeah. Give us a presentation, five minutes, yeah.
I was going to say good afternoon, but I guess I should say good evening to the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I would like to walk you through a presentation package that's on the screen, just to give you.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it's better.
Maybe I need to lean in a bit more. I would like to just take you through the presentation package and then obviously hear from the deputants and then provide a response. But just very quickly, you know, this is an application to amend a site-specific zoning bylaw for this property to increase the height from eight stories to nine stories. It is seeking to make some changes to the building's stepbacks at the rear of the building. It also seeks to make some interior changes that would impact the parking supply. It would also introduce two residential units on the ground floor facing the laneway to the north of the building as well. The intent of the application is to improve the overall form of the building and the functionality of the building in a manner that simplifies the construction and can yield better livable units. So for example, one of the sort of outputs or the repercussions of these changes is that we would be able to increase the number of one, sorry, number of two- and three-bedroom units from 32 units up to 43 units. And we would also be able to increase the amount of amenity space that's being provided as part of the development. The overall increase in GFA that we, resulting from these changes is 3.8% of what is permitted today, and the corresponding increase in units is actually one dwelling, extra dwelling unit. We've worked collaboratively with city staff on these design changes. We do have an active site plan application. Community planning has recommended approval of the application subject to a condition related to privacy screening on the west side of the building. Transportation staff has also written a report with no objections but subject to conditions. I do want to just touch on that because there is a condition that says that we should be providing four visitor parking spaces, and our variance is a request for two visitor parking spaces. We do accept this condition from transportation, so either we can leave it as a variance to permit two, but on condition that we provide four, or we could amend the condition, which I think is probably the best way, to request that we only provide four parking, visitor parking spaces instead of two.
Yes.
On the next page of the presentation, just slide two, if we could go there. So the site is located on the north side of Dundas Street West, and it backs onto a series of residential properties fronting onto the south side of Maria Street. Next page. One of the things that I do just want to highlight here is that the rear yard, the rear yard setback of those residential properties is quite considerable. I've measured the closest point of those residential properties to their rear yards, and it ranges from anywhere from 21 meters to 28-meter rear yard setback. And then between that, you have a seven, you have a laneway, and then the subject site. Next slide, please. I just wanted to highlight that there are at least 12 examples of existing under-construction or approved mid-rise buildings of up to and exceeding the proposed height of nine stories along this stretch of Dundas Street West, the closest of which is a nine-story building that is located directly across the street on the south side of Dundas Street from this application. We go to the next slide, you'll see that the site is designated on an, in terms of the city's official plan, on a designated avenue, and is designated as mixed-use areas, as are the residential properties to the east and west of the subject site fronting onto, onto Dundas Street. This is an area where growth is expected to occur over the long term. There is strong policy supporting the official plan for mid-rise mixed-use development on the avenues. Maybe we could go forward a couple of slides, maybe just to slide eight. And I just wanted to quickly highlight that this is a comparison, sorry, the next slide, this is a comparison, yeah, that's the one, this is a comparison of the proposed outline of the building. As you can see, what we've done is we've sort of rationalized the stepping of the building in the rear. The red-hatched area is an emerging guideline that the city planning department is promoting for future mid-rise buildings and their relationship to neighborhoods. They're recognizing that the sort of quote wedding cake design of mid-rise buildings has not been effective in seeing more of this typology, and they are recommending, it's not yet an approved guideline, but they're recommending to city council that there be a more rational approach to that. So I see my time is up, but yeah, the only other thing that I would like to speak to is the shadow study, but I think you're going to hear some comments about shadow in the in the deputations, and I'd be happy to respond to that in my responding comments.
Thank you, yes. Actually, can we do this part, which is he suggests the revision of the visitors' parking, so that we can clear that out? Only because, what do you think? I prefer that revising, revising the variance rather than putting the condition on.
I think so as well.
So that we need your help to revise this variance because instead of point 0.2 per unit, what is the figure? Thank you. That will come up with the total of four parking spaces.
Might need my calculator for that one.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is why you like the condition, right? I'm just kidding.
Four.
So you can do the calculation, and then we can move to hear the opposition, then you can give us the number. Okay. Let's have the opposition here.
Through you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll unmute the owner at 142 St. John's Road.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
142 St. John's Road.
Yes.
Okay, shall I proceed?
Yeah, can you tell us your name? Yeah, we have your full name on the screen, and yeah, thank you. Let's go ahead, yeah.
Yes, my name is Veera Ragavan. I live at 142 St. John's Road, which is one street away from Dundas Street. I've lived at this address for 39 years now. We have seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood over the period. We had the closing of the stockyards. We went from dry to wet, from the neighborhood with hardly any children to a neighborhood with the largest concentration of children in anywhere in the city in Canada. This is a vibrant neighborhood, mostly because people with children moved in, fixed up their houses, and they're raising their families. This is not a low-density neighborhood by any means. Most people do not have private driveways. They park on the road. The houses are all modest in size, and it is very much a family-oriented neighborhood. And it has, it is also a neighborhood that has very little park space. We have less than five square meters of green public park space per person in the junction, whereas the city average is 28 square meters, and the city target is to provide a minimum of 20 square meters for each neighborhood. So when you keep adding new buildings, especially high-rise buildings like this, you're going to reduce even the existing density further for park space, you know? I want to say this, the neighborhood is zoned for a maximum of four stories or 14 meters. Now, guide, city planning guidelines allow for going up to six stories. Now, the developer was not happy with this. He went to the OLT and managed to get, and the city was supposed to his proposal, but they managed to negotiate and get to an eight-story level with certain conditions. And then the developer advertised the building, put pictures of the sidewalk everywhere, even purchased a property across the road to make a sales office, but it looks like they didn't have any luck selling too many units, because the starting price for a tiny bachelor unit was $800,000. So far, they've had this permit to construct for more than two years, but they have done nothing. They have done no construction. The only thing they did so far is demolish one building and cut down mature trees belonging to the neighbor to the west rather sneakily when the neighbor was at work. So another, this is not a minor variance at all. This is a company that was not able to sell its products and had to withdraw from the market. Now they think by adding more density, they might be able to make work. Now, I think this is not right, you know? I do believe this, we must try to strengthen neighborhoods. None of the units in this building are going to be family-operated, you know? They've been looking from the beginning for outside investors to purchase these units. And I think if this, if the committee of variance approves this, we can throw all planning out the window and get rid of the planning department altogether. I strongly oppose this project, and I think the committee also should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? No, thank you. Next.
Through you, Madam Chair. We'll hear from the owner at 115 Maria Street.
Yes.
Stephen, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Stephen Hermans. I reside at 115 Maria Street, which is directly north of the proposed building. I have submitted a letter of
I do believe this, we must try to strengthen neighborhoods. None of the units in this building are going to be family-operated, you know? They've been looking from the beginning for outside investors to purchase these units. And I think if this, if the committee of variance approves this, we can throw all planning out the window and get rid of the planning department altogether. I strongly oppose this project, and I think the committee also should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to the speaker? No, thank you. Next.
Through you, Madam Chair, we'll hear from the owner at 115 Maria Street. Stephen, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee. My name is Stephen Hermans. I reside at 115 Maria Street, which is directly north of the proposed building. I have submitted a letter of opposition to this along with a significant number of members. I appreciate the previous speaker's comments characterizing this as not a minor variance. I agree. And his, their description of the process where the builder has previously bypassed this committee of adjustment, which is supposed to give the committee, community an opportunity to respond to requests for requested variances, they bypassed that by going directly to the Ontario Land Tribunal, and now are coming back to this committee to ask for a little bit extra. So this is an instance where we have a builder who, from my perspective, is acting not in the best faith in continuing to ask for more, more, more height. They characterize in their proposal, the, this is a minor variance first, and they identify it as only asking for 3% or 3.5% more height than is currently approved in this, in the bylaw, in the, I forget what it's called, but the OMB, the provincial decision. But if we look at this against the, the height restrictions for the mid-rise guidelines, which are 19.5 meters for a, the right-of-way on this strip, which is a 20-meter right-of-way, which would have allowed for six stories and a height of 19.5 meters, they are now proposing 10 stories or nine stories plus, as I understand, mechanical and height of the maximum allowable for a mid-rise of 36 meters. This is an instance where the applicant is, is asking for as much as they can give, as they can get from it, and so our collective objections and our individual objections are just the massing of this building. You know, we welcome in principle the proposal to add density to this area. It's great what it's done, you know, buildings like Heinzmann, other buildings along the street have really transformed the junction area. Completely appreciate the need for increased density. The massing and height of this building is not sensitive to the neighborhood to the north. The Junction neighborhood along Maria Street, as you know, are bounded by the tracks just north of Maria Street, so there is no further space for parking to go, for example, so I know the parking issue is a sideline, but it is a congested area. There is nowhere else for the, for vehicles to go or for community members to go south of, outside of Cross and South of Dundas West, which is not something to do, it's actually quite unsafe. Focus on my issues, though, the proposed height of 36 meters right now, to pose the position that is a minor variance, it's now 86% over that 19.5 meter height restriction for a building on this strip. I don't characterize that as minor as all, and my hope is that we're able to reject both the variance two and variance three, which are around the height and the stories. They're just asking for another mile. This is an instance where we've given an inch and now they're asking for a mile, or we've given a mile actually, and they're just asking for another mile. The committee has noted already today that, you know, they're accepting and appreciative applicants that have gone, have negotiated with committees, have been after me in good faith, and coming back with compromised decisions. This is a builder from our perspective that essentially, you know, bypassed this committee in the previous iteration and is now, has made no concessions towards the community from our perspective, and is simply just asking for as much as they can possibly get given from this, from the committee. I'm seeing that a bit left. I appreciate the committee's diligence tonight and your patience through a long afternoon and evening, and I'm appreciative that you are recognizing the need for that, those four parking spots, because we do need to have adequate parking on-site to make sure that we're not adding to the congestion of space. Thank you so much for your time tonight. You'll hear other neighborhoods hopefully according to these concerns, and I hope you're able to look at the letters of objection that our committee collectively submitted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? You have mentioned that this application had bypassed the, whatever, I don't know whether they need to come to committee adjustment, but they, you said that they get, they go straight to Ontario Land Tribunal.
Yep.
Did they, did they have, did they have community consultation before they do that?
There were, I'll let the, the builder speak to that, but as, you know, there were some opportunities for, well, they spoke at a very cramped event, pre-building, it was a pre-building plan. It was, I think, for a five-story building at the time, and we, collectively, the community is perfectly happy to have a building of this, a mid-rise building in the area. We just really want them to comply with the mid-rise guidelines. The city of Toronto and planners have worked to develop mid-rise guidelines based on expertise, you, expertise and members of like yourselves who have the best knowledge available to what is appropriate for the community. They've gone, so they, you know, my understanding of the, of the process was there were a number of back and forth through the consultation process, and the builder decided to take it direct to, I want to say OLT, I may be incorrect, Ontario Land Tribunal, I thought it was, or maybe it's OMB, I don't know the difference. The, and they basically appealed before a decision was made, but it was evident that there was a lot of resistance to the, to the, to the proposal, and essentially from our perspective, or my perspective, they bypassed the committee of adjustment and the opportunity for community to have formal input, input against this proposal by going directly to the province, and now we see them coming back to you to say, hey, we want a little bit more as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, we'll hear from the owner at 105 Maria Street. Mark here, unmuted. Hello, Mark?
All right, sorry, yep, thank you. Hopefully everyone can hear me. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but thank you for the opportunity, I'll take it anyway. I want to echo the comments of the previous, the previous speaker. I think the neighborhood has been extraordinarily willing to work with this developer on a building that adheres to the mid-rise guidelines or even exceeds them. You know, the building already exceeds the mid-rise guidelines. At each step, the builder, the developer has not acted in good faith in any of their interactions with the neighborhood, have said one thing and have constantly done another, and here they're doing the same thing now. The variances that are being asked for are, I think, really over the top. They, they will compromise light, they'll compromise privacy, parking will be an issue for the entire neighborhood, as well as, you know, we're already sort of dealing with issues within the laneway. So I think the developer does not deserve to get these minor variances, and they're not minor in any way, right? So the, they're already exceeding the mid-rise guidelines, they're already exceeding or breaking the angular plane. The agent for the developer also spoke about the proximity to other, to the neighbors being 21 meters. Well, the proximity to neighbors on St. John's Road is, St. John's Place, sorry, is much, much less than, than 21 meters. In some cases, it's probably three or four meters. So I don't, you know, again, I don't think there's really any justification for these additional variances. And yeah, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Happy to answer your question.
Any question?
Through you, Madam Chair, then we'll hear from the owner at 142 Evelyn Avenue.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. My name is Marilyn Miller. I'm the chair of the Junction Heritage Conservation District Board. We're a local group mandated by heritage planning with the city of Toronto. We're working with heritage planning to facilitate designation of the Toronto Junction, West Toronto Junction District. Now, this property is in the study area for the Heritage Conservation District, so it could be subject to designation in the future. It's been on the mapping, the planning mapping, for many years as an area of special character since 2018. It was, it was mapped as an area of where there was, there was a, a study has been approved by the city to, to look at designation, and RFP has been posted, and we're looking to see the studies start in fall this year. So I think that this developer should be looking more carefully at the mid-rise guidelines for streetscape design where they take into consideration, these are guidelines 19, they look at the height of cornice lines, they look at stepbacks to match the current heights along the street, and they're now proposing to add height to the, these stepbacks and these cornice lines that have already been approved, and we're very concerned about this. Also, I don't think, from my standpoint, that this is a minor variance. This variance is being requested on top of a zoning bylaw amendment, which is already allowing extra height, extra bulk than what is the zoning for the area and for the other properties around the area. So I'm also disappointed that the planning department has taken a very narrow focus while looking at these variances in terms of the four tests. They've only applied them to the property with the new zoning. They're not, but they're not looking at the zoning for the rest of the area. They're not looking at the larger context, and I think that that's something the committee of adjustment should be doing, because in the larger context, there's a lot to be lost by adding this extra bulk and changing the, the cornice lines and stepbacks on the front of the building. Now, the applicant showed a drawing that showed all the changes at the rear of the building, but we submitted drawings that show that there are also changes, and they may look, not look like major changes to the front of the building, but when you're messing around with cornice lines and datum lines and stepback lines, it's going to have a major impact on the streetscape. And I really don't think added height on something that already has two stories of added height should be considered a minor variance. It's also quite, if you look at a number of people who have objected, I think it's clear that it's having not a minor impact, but a major impact on the people around. My last point I wanted to make was that the city has indicated in their official plan policies that they are planning to preserve heritage in the city. They've made it clear that they're looking at this area, they've made it clear that there's mid-rise guidelines that should be applied to this area, and to a certain extent, I don't think that the applicant has really considered any of this in their, in their design. And I really don't think they should be allowed to come to the committee of adjustment and ask for more density on something that's already has a lot of density that's been granted to us. That's my comment.
Madam Chair, we can now hear from the owner at 18 St. John's Place. Sue Fleming.
My name's Sue Fleming. I live at 18 St. John's Place, which backs directly onto the proposed building on the east side. There is some mention of, you know, distance from houses. It's going up precisely 20 feet from my kitchen door. I've owned 18 St. John's Place for nearly 34 years. My family has lived in the junction for five generations, so I really appreciate Marilyn Miller's contribution to this discussion. Understandably, I have a tremendous love for this area. I've got a number of concerns about this request for minor variances, but the most critical goes beyond how it's directly affecting me and my family. I'm concerned about the precedent that this sets, both in terms of height above the mid-rise guidelines, but also in terms of process. We've been to the OLT with this developer and lost. Now they want more height than was agreed to by the tribunal. It seems like a very underhanded approach to go to the committee of adjustment and ask for just another story when we've already been to the OLT. And with several more developments planned within a few blocks along Dundas, one of which is owned by the same corporation, is this the new way that developers are going to steamroll over the concerns of residents? Is this the new sort of backdoor that development can use to sidestep the mid-rise guidelines? Like, don't get me wrong, I am supportive of development, but it needs to be in a scale that suits the area. Those guidelines were not just conjured out of thin air. Six stories I could have supported, but not happy with eight and certainly nine, plus mechanical with a double-height first floor that really brings it to 11 stories. It worries me as well that no shadow study was included in the notification letter sent out to residents so that they could see how this redesign would affect their properties, and most people shrugged it off until a group of us explained to them exactly what it meant to the hours of sunlight reaching their homes. And you mentioned the letters of objection, how many there are? There's actually 54, five, four, letters of objection. And when the developer saw that mounting number of letters of objection, they put up a new and slightly different version of their shadow study. So which is the accurate study? Shadow studies are a matter of mathematical angles. So how can those change when nothing else has? Are they just tudding the coat according to the cloth here, showing what's expeditious to their case? Now, my home is already lost. It's dwarfed by this oversized building going up 20 feet from my door. My property is already devalued, but I don't see why my neighbors should suffer the same fate. And it also seems like parking is being glossed over as if it were not an important issue. I'm 62, I have some mobility issues, not enough to merit handicap parking, but I park on the street and I lug my groceries home, sometimes two or more blocks. And that's what the current level of street permits issued. What will happen when those 56 units that don't have parking are all issued permits? And the building that's going up a block away on Dundas follows suit? I know everybody loves the junction. It's a great place to live, no question. But I kind of feel like, if you remember from high school, reading Steinbeck's Of Mice and Men, that we were all forced to read, you know, Lenny and his mouse, he loved it so much that he squeezed it to death unintentionally, and I really am afraid that that's what's going to happen to the junction. I hope that the committee will recognize the importance of working with residents to find solutions to housing with developments that don't destroy what they seek to enjoy. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Through you, Madam Chair, we'll now hear from the owner at 3208 Dundas Street West.
Yeah, okay. Hello, can you hear me? Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. Okay, my name's Matt, I live at 32, I live at 3208 Dundas Street West. So I wanted to point out a few things, I wanted to note, to point out some things that their planning consultant just said. He seems to be conveniently glossing over details and facts. So first off, Toronto Planning didn't recommend approval, but recommended adding approvals, adding planters to the east and west decks if approved by the committee of adjustment. I also want to point out there are no nine-story applications- I also wanted to point out, there are no nine-story applications within this immediate area, and the building across the street is actually by the same developer, and I believe it to be eight stories. The next nine-story application is four to five kilometers away in a completely different area with a different context. And as well as in terms of development density, the consultant mentioned a 3% increase in density. That may be so, but actually, in terms of height, this building is actually around 10% higher. That is not minor. If you were to take the actual height and use floors to measure it, this project would be almost 12 stories in height. So I just, I find it very alarming that their consultant and the developer would cherry-pick the data to suit their development. Okay, so I also wanted to point out, like, something really incredible has happened here. I mean, this, the junction's a fantastic community. Everybody, everybody loves it, and in fact, everybody's reasonable about development. This is not a NIMBY community. But we really need to note that we have over 54 letters of opposition received, and that's incredible for a community. And that speaks volumes of what's happening here and just how wrong this minor variance is. These are not a bunch of NIMBYs against development. These are letters that, if you read them, they all speak to the four planning tests, and clearly, all the tests are not met, and this minor variance should be rejected. So I wanted to point out, in 2022, I challenged the developers at the OLT with the community because it significantly exceeded the mid-rise guidelines in all ways, and I took it upon myself to stand up with the community against this application, believing in the public process. So in that application, the developer was seeking eight stories while zoning and the mid-rise guidelines only allowed for six stories. The developer won at the OLT and ended up achieving two stories over the mid-rise guidelines and had significant relaxation of the angular plan. So this new resubmission at the COA, it does not pass the four planning tests. The changes are not minor. The general intent of the zoning is not followed. This is not minor in nature and not desirable. And I think the 54 letters, they cannot be ignored. The additional shadowing is also extensive. I wanted to point out that we did do a shadow study of the original approved application. And in fact, in December, the shadows ended just at the bottom of the houses on Mariah Street, on the backyard. And, and this recent shadow study, which another speaker alluded to, this COA-supporting shadow study, which was uploaded by the consultant developer on October 16, past the deadline, they're showing the approved shadowing as over the houses, and then the additional story casting shadows beyond that, and therefore, the shadows are minor. This is incorrect. I believe this is incorrect because we did our own study. The current shadows are actually at the bottom of the houses, and the new application of nine stories, which is in fact 12 stories in real height, sends the shadows to the middle of Mariah Street. So this is not a minor change. This is, this is a huge change for the community. Not only to the people to the north, and not only December, but on all the shoulder months and everybody around. Okay, so, and the planner also mentioned the new mid-rise guidelines. Those guidelines are in progress. They're not approved by council, and they should not be used to measure this application. But that said, this new minor variance application even exceeds the new mid-rise guidelines in terms of height, which this area allows six stories. So, you know, I ask, you know, is planning really reviewing the drawings, or are they just greenlighting anything that comes in? Because I have a real concern about the data that's presented to us, the way it's presented, the time it's presented, and how things are discussed. In fact, others have pointed it out. So, you know, I would appeal to the Committee of Adjustment. You know, your work is really appreciated. This is not a minor variance. These are not minor changes. This is a full rezoning masquerading as a minor variance, and the community, this is outrageous and this is not fair.
Thank you, sir. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask you to draw to a conclusion. You're past your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, thank you for hearing me. I think the community needs hopes that you hear us and you make the right decision, and that this project should be turned down because it is not minor.
Thank you, sir. Panel, any questions of the speaker?
No.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then. We will move on to the owner at 3 St. John's Place.
Hi there. I'm just here to express my concerns and disapproval regarding this proposal.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I just, can I hold you there? Could you just give us your full name and address, please?
Yes, sorry, I just got disconnected, so I didn't hear that I had to do that. But my name is Emma Yew, and I'm a resident of 3 St. John's Place.
Okay, go ahead.
So this proposal aims to exceed the maximum height and gross floor area established by the existing zoning bylaw. Such changes could adversely affect the character of the neighborhood, obstruct views, and create overshadowing for nearby properties. One of the key attributes that attract people to high park junction area, it is the unobstructed views and the abundance of greenery. It is essential that this area remains a residential enclave that prioritizes open spaces and natural beauty and not shadowed by big buildings. Allowing residential units on the first story contravenes existing zoning regulations. This could set a troubling precedent for the future developments that disregard established zoning bylaws, undermining integrity of the planning framework. As well, the proposal significantly reduces the number, required number of residents and visitor parking spaces, exacerbating parking congestion in an already densely populated area. This is particularly concerning, given the parking issues faced by many others who use the facilities around us. In this neighborhood, we're surrounded by a synagogue, a church, and a funeral home. And over, like, the year, there's a lot of events that are getting hold within these spaces, and parking is a, quite an issue. I live at 3 St. John's Place. It's a one-way, but when there's events at these facilities, there are cars parked in spaces where they're not supposed to. As well, this plan includes a parking space with inadequate vertical clearance, which not only violates bylaw requirements, but also creates safety hazard and limits accessibility for residents with vehicles. The construction of a larger building may result in prolonged disruptions, including noise and traffic congestion, congestions, adversely affecting the quality of life for existing residents. And as, a couple of years ago, at Runnymede and Mariah Street, there's a signage that is no left turns for rush hours. I think the signage kind of already indicates that traffic flow was already an issue. They had to somehow control it by the city. I think we could see how densely populated this is. So I can't imagine approving this application, how much this could affect people coming in, especially driving and the commute. But I urge the committee to consider these points when evaluating this proposed development, and just thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Panel, any questions? No? Okay, next speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair, then. We'll hear from the owner at 107 Maria Street, then.
Good evening. Is your, is your button pushed? There you go.
Thank you. Dear Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. Name and, name and address, please.
Catherine Morley. I'm at 107 Mariah Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting for all of us to speak. We really appreciate it. For the last 15 years, I have enjoyed watching our historic little neighborhood bloom and flourish and officially become hip. The junction was a secret that could not be kept, so naturally, developers were bound to find out and want to build here. This could have been a good thing. We have a lot of progressive, open-minded people here, as you've heard, who encourage urban densification for the environment, social, and economic reasons. We see how this community could benefit from the revitalization of certain parts of Dundas Street. In fact, we talk about it as neighbors. The Junction Residents Association launched an initiative last year called Design Your Main Street, surveying residents on how they would like to see the development of the junction progress. It included, it concluded that we wanted more community spaces, more green space, more community housing, and developments that fit within the existing fabric of the junction. This initiative was done in the absence of a formal avenue study by the city. I want to repeat that point. No formal study has been done to examine and/or upgrade the infrastructure of the junction, despite the dozen or more developments that have appeared in the last few years and the many more coming in. This is a little bit like intentionally exceeding the maximum capacity of a life raft and just blindly hoping that it stays afloat. When Gerlock first approached the residents about this development, they promised they would work with us and hear our concerns. They heard, but they did not listen. When their plans exceeded the mid-rise guidelines, we went en masse to the OLT, but we lost, and that was heartbreaking for our community. We felt abandoned and unheard, not only by Gerlock, but by our city councillor and planners. Now Gerlock is trying to sneak in this last-minute variance to further exceed the height setback and a bunch of other items. I will not call this a minor variance because it greatly negatively impacts the hundreds of homes along Mariah Street and St. John's Place. And I would note, they did this very quietly, notifying a few and only select residences, giving us very little time to respond. However, our community has responded, 54 letters of objection, and there would have been more if we'd had more time. I spoke about how this development affects the junction, and it's mostly about the precedents being set while all the condos come in. But I heard you ask earlier about how it affects somebody personally, so I will add, it greatly reduces my sunlight year-round. I'm directly north of the building. To practice, practically none in the winter. And the main reason that I bought this home was the backyard and the sunny locale. There's a loss of privacy with the reduced setback and the proposed new ground-level dwellings. We've already lost the green canopy around. They've cut down numbers, a dozen trees, I believe. There's decreased, they're proposing decreased laneway width, I believe, although I will mention they conveniently forgot to dimension that part of the drawings that were uploaded on the 16th, which would make it harder for myself and my neighbors to access their garages. This also elevates concern for safety of kids, pets, and residents who use the laneway as well as it brings me closer to the smell and sound of the garbage and loading area which now face my house. This will all decrease my property value significantly, but it's not just about me. It's also the dozens of houses closest to us, closest to it on the northeast and west side. And as I mentioned, it sets a precedence for this being okay within the junction. To Gerlock, I would like to say you had the chance to be upheld by our community. You could have set an incredible precedence of trust and collaboration with this unique and internationally lauded community. We even spelled it out for you what the junction wants. Instead, you pretended to listen and have our best interests at heart, and then went behind our backs, did whatever you wanted, and then asked for more. We do not want this variance. It does nothing but damage our community further to the benefit of no one but you. To the committee, I ask that you listen to the insightful, reasonable, repeated, and unanimous requests from our community to please not grant any of these variances. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Panel, any questions? No?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can now hear from 111 Maria Street.
I don't really want to follow that one up, actually. That was really good. Hi there, Matthew Ogley, co-owner of 111 Mariah Street, here speaking on behalf of my household, my husband Jensen, and myself. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that people have said because I know it's been a long day for everyone here, including some of us who have also sat in and waited for our moment. But what I wanted to do was revisit some of the themes broadly that we've heard here from, from the many people who are speaking out against us. Everyone in this city deserves sunlight. It's being taken away from us. I also live directly beside Cady and will be very, very exposed to the new shadows, which again, conveniently have been represented in very tight timelines with new drawings. Everyone deserves safety and privacy. We've already talked about the ways that our privacy will be limited. I worry about safety with all the young families who populate our street, and they have awesome kids running up and down, as they should be. If anyone in this room has spent time in our area, you would know very well that Mariah Street is used as a throughway by many vehicles that go at high speeds, higher than the speeds posted, and more traffic in this area with more residents and less parking spaces. And I, I lived in a condo in King West myself, more Uber Eats cars coming and parking in those laneways. It will be a disaster, and we know it now, so let's not pretend in the future when something happens that we didn't have the conversation and we didn't have the foresight, because it's there to be seen right now what's going to happen. And if you look at the, the way that traffic flows in our neighborhood, it's irrefutable that we're used as a throughway. Everyone deserves integrity, and I think the conduct of Gerlock in this process has denied us of that. I want to talk about a specific story of our household. It's alluded to in the letter we submitted, where we came back from being away for two days and found a large tree branch in our backyard. That's disappointing to find. It's disappointing to see that that tree branch fell from a tree that was removed. It's disappointing to know that that tree was not approved to be removed. It's disappointing to contact the city over a year ago and still not have an answer as to how and why that tree was removed. It's disappointing to know that the developer did nothing to acknowledge this. I would expect if I cut down a tree and it fell on someone's property, I would knock on their door and ask to speak to them and see if I could resolve it. We had to reach out. When we reached out, and this is all on record and it's with your city planning department, they have emails on this, when we reached out, we got a terse response for us reaching out. We were told that they didn't know that the branch fell in our backyard. How is that possible, under a process where you're exercising due diligence? You cannot cut down a tree and not know where it fell. It is impossible unless you cut it down with your eyes closed. And if you did that, you are not showing the level of integrity that an organization who wants to build now a nine-story building, despite the regulations that they've already pushed, should show. We need to consider the integrity and the character of the people that we deal with. I think that's why you're all here. I trust that's why you're all here. My faith is with you to make a decision that considers the process that you've heard tonight and the lack of integrity from this organization. And, and again, I think it's been shown in many, many ways. The last thing is, we just, we all deserve a good quality of life. And what's cool and exciting about this process is all the people who have rallied together to stand up for the community. Again, I think that's what this process is for. But it is concerning, when it's a circular reference, that's the agent here defending Gerlock, is citing another Gerlock property as a reason why this should be approved. That's the beginning of the end, folks. It was said earlier tonight, give an inch, take a mile. Paul, I like the way that Steve said it earlier, give a mile, take another. We can't continue to let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Panel, any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, is any further?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We did have the owners at 125 Maria Street and 117 Maria Street on the list, but they're not going to be participating, so we can hear back from the agent.
Welcome back, sir. You've heard quite a range of concerns. I wonder if you could take some time and try to address them?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to, to respond to some of those items that have been raised, and I will try my best to work my way through those comments. And, you know, thank you for those comments from, from the deputants that have, have taken the time to come out this evening or to attend this evening on the call. I do want to just respond to a couple of items. One item was commenting about my characterization of the planning department's position on this application. I just wanted to refer the committee members to the final paragraph of the planning report where it says, "Community planning staff recommend approval of this application, as the proposed variances will result in a built form that fits within the planned context", and continues on. It's because of that direct statement by the planning department that I chose to characterize it as a recommendation of approval by the planning department. So I do take it seriously when there's accusations that I'm misrepresenting, and I just wanted to point out, that's where I'm taking that position from. Maybe just a couple of other, I'll touch on a few items. One relates to the lane, laneway. I think the comment from the, the deputant about the width of the laneway. We're actually giving land to the city. We're required to widen the laneway at the rear of the property. So there's actually a 1.67-meter laneway widening. This will be dedicated to the city to widen that, that laneway up to six meters. And then there is actually, as a result of this, we're increasing the rear setback of the ground floor through this application beyond... of the ground floor through this application, uh, beyond what was in the site-specific bylaw. And the revised map shows that we're increasing that rear yard setback. So the overall, uh, distance from the north side of the laneway is actually increasing from the site-specific bylaw, thereby increasing, uh, separation from the residential properties to the north as well. I do want to touch on the sunlight. What you're seeing in those diagrams is actually the incremental sunlight that would be cast by the additional height over and above what is, would be cast by the massing in the site-specific zoning by.
Hold there, can we just pull up the shadow study while he's speaking about the shadow issues? Have you guys got it?
Yeah. And so the-
Would you mind if we do that?
Yeah, please, of, of course, yeah. And so, um, I think it's a little hard for me to see from here, but, um, I think what you're seeing there is the, um, a, a heavy outline. If we could zoom into just one of the, um, one of the screenshots. Yeah, so the red outline is the outline of a shadow cast by the site-specific, uh, building mass. And where you see green that extends beyond that, um, red line, that is the incremental shadow that would be generated by the additional height of this, uh, minor variance application. So one of the things that we were mindful of in looking at making changes to the building is can we keep the incremental shadow so that it's casting on the rooftops of the garages that are in the rear yards of the properties along Maria Street? And I think if you run through the, uh, the timeframe, what you're going to find is that the, uh, shout, the incremental shadow is casting on the rooftops of the garages, uh, to the north of the subject site. Um, there are some, um, the two critical, um, timeframes that the city reviews is March 21st, September 21st, the two equinoxes. And if you were to look at the June, the June shadows, uh, in the summertime, you wouldn't have, um, you know, shadow cast, uh, onto those garages even then. Yes, in, in the winter, on December 21st, there is substantial shadow, but that is, um, not a timeframe that, um, that the city looks to protect for in the long term. And, um, the, the, as a right building would cast shadow into the rear yards of those properties at that time, uh, of the year. So the critical ones are March 21st and, and September 21st, and that's why we provide them as part of our application. With respect to heritage, I would just say that there was no listed or designated heritage buildings on the site. The site is not currently a heritage conservation district. However, the city did circulate this application to heritage preservation services staff, and I understand that they have no, uh, comments on the application with respect to heritage. Streetscape was mentioned a few times. One of the things I think you'll notice about the application is, um, the, um, you know, it's, it's, it's an evolving street, streetscape along that stretch of Dundas because it's going from what was traditionally a kind of a residential, uh, significant front yard landscape setback to becoming a more urban, uh, streetscape. And so there's those setbacks as well. I think I've touched on the main, uh, points there, but happy to take any questions that you might have.
I think the one area you didn't, and I think would warrant some consideration from you is parking. We've heard an awful lot-
Yeah.
-of people raising concerns about, um, the impact of reducing the number of parking spaces in this particular area. So I wonder if you could speak to that?
Yeah. And just one, one clarification, with respect to the parking space that is impacted by a dimension, that's just one singular parking space that's under the ramp.
But you're reducing, I think, by 10? Is that what your proposal is?
Yeah, so the residential parking is reduced, um, and that is acknowledging the city's move to, um, remove the minimum parking standards for buildings, um, to removing those minimum parking standards as part of a, I guess, a, um, a kind of a fundamental shift in the way in which parking is, uh, is considered, this is for residential, uh, parking. With respect to visitor parking, we have a, a report that's been completed by W S P, and they've done some, uh, proxy site research. They've looked at a number of other, uh, minimized buildings in the, in the, in the region, or sorry, in the district, and found that the, uh, proposed visitor parking spaces, uh, that's been requested, uh, is acceptable. Transportation staff have not agreed with their conclusion of two visitor parking spaces and have recommended four, and we're agreeable, uh, and supportive of that, uh, that parking standard.
So your, your, your previous proposals, it's all for underground parking, right?
Yes.
So, uh, if you're removing 10 spaces, are you repurposing that space for some other purpose?
We're not building as many levels of underground parking.
So you're not going deeper, so you're removing, uh, a level of underground parking?
Yes.
You were going to recalculate for us the visitor variance?
Yeah, I believe it's 0.04, uh, and then in brackets, four parking spaces.
Okay. Panel, any, uh, any questions? Phil?
We've all been here long enough, so I'm not going to go into great detail. One of the things that, uh, was a concern, but I think your materials actually address it, uh, is the, um, is variance number one about putting residential on the ground floor. The, uh, concern that it raises for me is the potential future elimination of, uh, retail space. What can you tell me about the proposal to alleviate that concern, that approving variance one won't result? Because I think one of the benefits of this development to the community is going to be increasing the retail fabric of Dundas Street, which ends not entirely, but essentially a little bit to the east of here, but could continue on. And so what, what can you, um, what assurance can you give me that approving variance one doesn't open the door to eliminating the retail spots?
Only to say that the proposed residential units that would be on the ground floor are not facing Dundas Street. They're actually on the north side of the ground floor facing the laneway. Um, and that we've got three retail units, uh, facing Dundas Street in the site plan. So, um, th- this is a strategy or an approach that has been, is starting to see more of in, in mid-rise buildings, where you have these integrated ground floor residential units that face the rear, uh, laneway of mid-rise buildings. These units can be accessed either independently from the laneway, or they can be accessed internally within the building by access through the lobby off of Dundas Street, and they also then have access to the amenities of the building as well. So, uh, you know, I, all I can say is that our plans don't show, uh, residential fronting onto Dundas, the ground floor, they show retail. And as part of the site plan application, the city will be securing those, uh, you know, that the layout of the ground floor within respect of that.
Anyone else? Can't talk? Do you want to write down a question? No, just kidding. Why don't you just hold on, okay?
Okay, yes. When we in committee, maybe I can-
All right. No further questions? All right, let's go into committee. Thank you, sir. Who wants to start us off?
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and start us. I, um, I think the spirit of the community is commendable, and I, I appreciated the way in which all of these concerns were presented in a, in a serious, uh, calm, reflected sort of manner. And there were some comments about, you know, this brought the community together, and, and I think all of that is, is laudable. I do, uh, I would characterize a lot of the objections we heard, though, as having to do with the development, um, regardless of the variances. And I didn't hear much, in fact, I didn't really hear anything that had to do with, um, additional, um, impacts that will be caused by these variances, uh, when you consider them in light of the, uh, shadow study. So, uh, and if you look at the res- number of residential units, it's not even a increase in, um, uh, in density, uh, by a substantial margin. It's only a single additional unit, but units are being, there is a bit more G F A, but that's creating more two-bedroom units, which I think is even more desirable by our current, uh, rental stock standards. So, uh, I, I think the comments, uh, were heard. They're well-taken, but they are things that were more for consideration by the O L T. Unfortunately for the neighborhood, um, or those that are, uh, speaking today, the O L T found differently. If we look at the minor variances being proposed, I think they, they are, uh, they are truly minor.
Thank you. Here?
Mr. Goesch's, uh, comments, because really, when one does look at the, um, variances themselves, uh, they are not, uh, excessive requests. The building's going to be built, uh, whether the variance is, uh, approved or not. It may be an eight-story structure, but it, it's already been approved. And I do note that in the area going particularly east, where I've, uh, familiar with, there are a number of buildings that are going up on Dundas, and they're all along Dundas. And Dundas is a major thoroughfare as well. So I, I, I sympathize, empathize with, uh, the, the neighbors for some of the, uh, issues that they'll be facing, particularly the, uh, the homes that are on St., uh, is it St. James Park or I forget the, um, they're right next door to a very new large, uh, structure. But having said all of that, I think this is, um, a supportable application.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jim, did you want to struggle and say anything, or are you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. I'll, I'll speak to, uh, a little bit of, I, I would agree with my colleague. First of all, 54 letters of opposition mean that gets everyone's attention. That's not, uh, something that we, um, take lightly. Uh, and we have read every single letter and we appreciate all the, uh, people who deposed today. My sense is that people are, are just kind of ticked about this development as a whole for a variety of reasons. And, uh, but as my colleagues pointed out, we need to look at what the variances are before us and quite frankly, what the incremental impact of those variances are, um, on the surrounding neighborhood. Can I just ask staff to pull up slide eight of the, uh, agent's presentation and put it on the screen? Because I think it's a luster, it was luster for me. Sorry for throwing you a curve. No, the next one. Yeah, so that one is the one that struck me. So, um, on that one, um, it really shows what, in the blue, is the sort of additional, um, proposed area that is being built. Um, and, uh, I look at that and I, I, I see that while there is an additional story on the top, um, and I don't think, given what the shadow studies are revealing, that incrementally, um, the changes that are before us are going to have, um, a significant increased impact beyond what the, uh, existing building already does. So, um, and that's what we as a committee have before us, is we have to look at the variances and what the actual variance is, not the whole project, which is mostly, uh, already approved. So I, I frankly don't see the incrementality of impact, um, uh, in this application. So the variances that are before us are, are minor. I, I would like to see some, um, attention given by the, by the applicant to, uh, the traffic and the parking and the congestion issue. I think that's a, I know this area like others do, and, uh, that is a, a legitimate issue. Uh, and I think it would be in the client's interest, um, to, um, consider what things could in fact be done to reduce or mitigate some of the impact. This is a, a stretch of Dundas, which while, well-served by bus, is served only by bus as opposed to some higher-order transit where we're seeing this kind of additional density be introduced. So, um, anything that, uh, could be do, could be done to, I think, try and alleviate that impact on the surrounding community, I think would be appreciated by the surrounding community, particularly if the client is planning to do more business in this area. Uh, so, uh, I'm, I'm similarly, I think, I, I appreciate the, uh, all the letters and all the time people spend to, uh, share their thoughts with us, but what we have before us, I think, uh, falls within the category of being a minor. So, uh, if I can get a motion?
Sure. Yeah, happy to, um, move to approve this. Subject to the, um, uh, transportation condition and, or sorry, we're no longer doing that because it's as amended, so, um, approve it as amended, but subject to the planning
Okay. See Guards was up?
Yeah.
Is there a, is there section 30, 45, whatever section it is? There's nothing, there's no additional payment required? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, uh, Metrolinks?
It was-
Warning clauses, or is that going to be part of the site plan?
I think we probably leave it to the site plan.
Yeah, I'm, I think that's, that's fine, and given that, the nature of what they're asking for.
Okay, motion by Mr. Goesch with those conditions. And I have a seconder by Mr. Byatt, all in favor. Uh, unanimous, you have your approval. Thank you. And that concludes today's proceedings, and we are adjourned at 9:01.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you, staff. Thanks, everybody. I'm sorry. Hope you're feeling better.